Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. You are now live on YouTube and it is 6:30.
Thank you. Welcome everyone to this virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council Monday, October 11th, 2021. We're starting with the closed session at 6:30 with the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Could you call the meeting? I'm calling the meeting order. Can we have a rule call please?
It's Member Banano.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Councilmember Kake.
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. Thank you. At this time, there's an opportunity for the public to address the City Council regarding the closed session items. Let's see, Clerk, would you explain the process for participating?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person regarding only the closed session items. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open the public comment period. We have one item, which is a conference with a labor negotiating regarding a negotiator regarding our joint powers agency with Pleasanton for the fire department. Is anyone who wishes to speak to us on this?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment period on the closed session item and we'll adjourn to the closed session and we'll be back here at 7:00.
Thank you.
You're on mute. You're still on mute.
Okay, I'm glad you let me know that before I was really supposed to be started. So you did get the plaque, right?
I got the plaque. Can you see it?
Yes, yes, I saw it in our office. Congratulations.
Wow, thank you.
Nice, isn't it?
So we've got to hold a meeting on redistricting. And so thanks for showing up early, but you won't be on for at least 20 minutes.
Okay. That's all right. It'll be fun to watch your another council meeting, huh?
Yeah, okay. Well, I just want to let you know. So thank you so much. And I just wanted to give you the heads up on that. And we're we're live now. So everybody in public can hear us.
Okay, thanks. All right. Well, I'll just I'll just sit back and mute myself again and wait till it's our turn.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for being here. And thanks for the award. So TV 30 will give us a countdown?
Yes, indeed. Okay, here we go. In five, four, three, two, one, we're live.
Hey, welcome everyone to this Monday, October 11, 2021, virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council. We're returning from a closed session and we started at 6:30. And at this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Councilmember Keg?
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here. Up next is our pledge of allegiance. Could we put that up, please? Everyone can follow me on mute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, is there any action from the closed session to be reported? Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, this is Jason on call, your city attorney. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think now we're on to the we got to reorder the agenda. Because we're dealing with the redistricting and that the rules are that that has to start at a specific time. We scheduled that for 7:05. So we're, let's check my clock here. We're early. So that we need to just hang out for four minutes, I guess. Is that correct?
And that is correct.
Okay. So we can we'll be back at 7:05. And if TV 30 could give us the countdown to 7:05, that would be great. That'll be for agenda item 6 dot 2. Mr. Mayor. Okay, that was TV 30 saying we can go ahead at 7:05.
Hold on, let's do it. Countdown, please.
Oh.
Sorry, we just have to in three, two, one, and we're live.
Hey, welcome back, everyone. It's 7:05 and we're starting with the agenda item 6 dot 2. Somewhat unusual that it has to start at a particular time. I don't think in my 11 years on the council, we've ever had this before. But the idea is that it's a public hearing in compliance with California Elections Code, Section 21607 dot 1, to present redistricting information and an overview of the upcoming redistricting process for public input at the noticed public hearing time of 7:05 PM. So can I have the staff report at this point, please?
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. And I'm going to introduce Marie Weber, your city clerk, to give us an overview and start the presentation off.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This is Marie Weber, your city clerk. Tonight, we have consultants Michael Wagaman with Wagaman Strategies and Jennifer Netwig with Trepey Smith, as well as Assistant City Attorney Tara Mazandi to present this item. I will provide a brief overview of the city's districting history and where we are today. Mr. Wagaman will then provide a presentation on what redistricting is and the process going forward. And finally, Ms. Netwig will provide an overview of the community outreach strategy for the city council this evening. In 2018, the Livermore City Council initiated the process to transition from an at-large to district-based election system to comply with this California Voting Rights Act of 2001, alongside other East Bay cities such as San Ramon, San Leandro, Fremont, and Union City. More recently, the Pleasanton Unified School District and City of Pleasanton have also begun the process. During the initial during the initial process, the city sought broad community engagement and had robust discussion before finalizing the current map. Following the federal decennial census, Livermore must review the boundaries of voting districts and re-adopt new or existing boundaries to ensure the districts remain substantially equal and still protect the rights of members of communities of interest to vote for candidates of their choice. Data. Excuse me. Data from the most recent 2020 census has been evaluated by the city's demographer and current district lines are in compliance with the Fair Maps Act. The council is now required to complete the redistricting process and may then choose any alternative alternative that meets the requirements of the Fair Maps Act or re-adopt the existing compliant district lines. The City of Livermore will host a general municipal election on November 8, 2022. Under state law, public entities with elections in November have until April 17, 2022 to adopt district maps that reflect any changes in population indicated in the 2020 census. Tonight, the city council is being asked to receive the report on redistricting and conduct a public hearing to receive public input. I now like to turn it over to Michael Wagaman with Wagaman Strategies.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. And I believe staff has a copy of the presentation to load. It's nice to be back with you all. I think it was almost exactly two years ago when we were finishing up the initial conversion to district elections. And the good news is that once you complete this process, you won't have to see me or any other demographers for about 10 years. So we'll be back on to a normal sequence going forward. But if staff wants to advance to the next slide. The purpose of this hearing is really, as was noted, education and this first stage of public input. But this is a step in a much longer process than when you originally converted to district elections, which was under a very compressed timeline. While here, as was noted, we have well into next year to complete this process and allow a robust public input. So this is again, just kind of to reorient everyone to what is redistricting and how does it work? And that first opportunity for the public to start providing feedback and also to request for any additional information that may aid the process as we move forward. And if we advance the slide. Again, you'll see here under the Fair Maps Act, and as we will talk about more, there are at least four public hearings required, which have all been scheduled, as you can see, going in through March of next year. The law, that is a floor, not a ceiling, and it does allow for additional meetings. And Livermore is already moving forward with that additional steps and that additional level of transparency with a workshop scheduled for next week, which I believe some of my colleagues will be talking about as we move forward. But if we advance to the next slide. So what is redistricting? Fundamentally, as the city now knows, under district elections, people are not elected at large. They are elected from districts. So everyone doesn't vote for everyone. Everyone in a district votes for their one representative from that district. And over time, people move and populations change. And redistricting is really the process of reflecting those changes as they happen and rebalancing those lines. And that's an important process because it affects how people are represented, how people are represented in city government for the next 10 years. And if we advance. So what are some of the reasons you might have to redraw your lines? And I emphasize have to redraw your lines. Again, the census is conducted every 10 years. This one was unique. But we now do have that census data, albeit a little bit delayed. And that tells us how the city has changed over the last 10 years. There have been changes to the rules since, even since the city converted to district elections. And I'll talk a little bit about those. And also, they're just given as an opportunity for public input to say what's worked and what hasn't. So what do those changes pretend for what the city may have to do versus what it may want to do? If we advance to the next slide. These are your current district boundaries. And the key number to see here are the different, the deviations between the districts and particularly the differences between the smallest district and the largest district, which in this case is District 1 and District 2. And you see that total deviation. So the difference between the two is about 8%. And that's a really important number to keep in mind. Because if that was over 10%, that is one of the signals that you may have to change your lines as opposed to having an option to keep your current lines. And because you're under that 10% threshold, that means these, that's one signal that these existing lines are ones that the city could leave in place if it so chose. The other key number to look at this page is on this very bottom where it says ideal, which is 22,002. That's the target we're aiming for. You don't have to get there exactly, but that's kind of the ideal, as it literally says. The only other thing I will note on this slide is where you see the total population of 88,000. That is again, from the 2020 census. For members of the public, there may be places where you see a slightly different number. That's because in California, we have a new law that wasn't in place in 2010, where the state actually adjusts for incarcerated populations and reassigns people who are in a state facility back to where they lived before they were incarcerated. So that slightly changed the number for Livermore. So if you see somewhere else, a slightly different number for Livermore, it's not a mistake. It's just a reflection of that additional step that California has chosen to go through and requires all cities to use for their local redistricting. If we advance to the next slide. Here you see an ethnic breakdown of racial ethnic breakdown of that population. When you see citizen voting age population, that is the closest measure that the census uses to determine eligible. It is important because under the Federal Voting Rights Act, which is different from the California Voting Rights Act, the California Voting Rights Act is the law that required the city to convert to district elections. The Federal Voting Rights Act dates back to 1965 and talks about how those district lines are drawn. And critically, for protected classes, which include Latinos, Asians, and African Americans under the Federal Voting Rights Act, if you can draw a district or one of those groups can form a majority, the law may, in fact, in some places compel that. But you can see within Livermore, that is not a possibility. So the Federal Voting Rights Act does not be that it will have a significant influence on your process. Again, that's important because that speaks to a fact that you don't necessarily have to change those current lines if they are working well for the city. And that any changes would be more optional. And if we advance. And here you see the criteria for the redistricting process. These should be very familiar to anybody who was involved in the conversion to district elections. These are very similar. I will note they are not identical. The Fair Maps Act did make some changes. But those are largely things that are pretty don't significantly change the process. So for example, before the law was changed to refer to respecting topography and geography, that's now become understandable boundaries. But this concept is still the same that when you look at the edges of a district, you should be able to know and be able to tell somebody else where is that district boundary? The other big change in the law is that it ranked these criterias. So it said, do this, and this is more important than that. Again, because Livermore did follow a very robust transparent process that really did try to follow the law closely. My analysis is that these changes in the criteria don't negatively impact the the current lines. And again, not that the city has to keep those lines. It can absolutely make changes, but wouldn't necessarily be required to make changes. And I will emphasize that even if everybody loves the current lines, doesn't want to make a single change, you still, under the law, though, have to go through this process. The score hearing process is required by the law and something the city does need to go through no matter what. So what are these criteria and what do they mean? And as a little refresher course, because it has been two years, if we advance. You can, you'll see here for equal population, this is in nomenclature, the one person, one vote concept. It's important to know that equal population doesn't mean exactly equal. It, under state law, they refer to the term substantially. And what that basically means is that there just needs to be good faith, that there faith effort to try to make the districts as equal as possible. And when they are not exactly the same size, that there's some justification for it. There's some other thing you are trying to accomplish when those are not exactly the same size. And when the courts look at that, that 10% marker is no longer considered a safe harbor, but is something the courts do look at in that if your deviations are over 10%, they tend to take much stricter scrutiny as to why those districts are varying in size. While under, under 10%, they tend to be a little bit more permissive, particularly again, if you're trying to accomplish other criteria. So what are those other criteria? Again, if we advance. One of them is compliance with federal law. And in terms of redistricting, federal law heavily looks at the issues of race and ethnicity for understandable reasons, because so much of elections, particularly when you talk about it in national context, has the history of the country has been reflected in some of the laws that have been passed to try to ensure people have a fair opportunity to participate in the process. And under federal law, and this is a bit of a contradiction, but A, race cannot be the predominant factor in the redistricting process. So you have to consider other criteria. It doesn't mean it's not something you can't talk about. It just says you can't make racial and ethnic considerations. Make every other criteria subordinate to those racial and ethnic considerations. Conversely, as I mentioned previously, under the Federal Voting Rights Act, there are times when you explicitly have to consider race and ethnicity, particularly when there's a negative impact on the ability of protected classes to elect. Again, because of Livermore demographics, I do not expect the Federal Voting Rights Act to play a major role in your process. which is different from even some of your nearby colleagues in Alameda and Contra Costa counties. So if we advance to the next slide. If the consideration of race and ethnicity is the most complicated part of the redistricting, contiguous is probably one of the easiest to understand in that it simply says that all parts of the district need to touch each other. So that's a pretty easy concept. If you look on the picture on the right, you will see that purple district is not contiguous because there's the one part that's not touching the others. And that's all that is. If we move to the next slide. The next concept of respecting neighborhoods and communities of interest. What is a community of interest? Fundamentally, it's who goes together? Who are the people who want to be put together in order to make sure that they have fair and effective representation? The law specifically refers to common and social and economic interests. But it is a pretty broad concept. And it's a concept where the public in particular is important, because if we advance to the next slide, you'll see there's not a set database. There's no database I can download of all communities of interest in California. It really depends on the public to provide feedback on what are those communities? What are those neighborhoods? Where are they? What are their boundaries? Because sometimes people don't agree on the boundaries of a community. And why is it important that they be kept together? So through the next couple of months, that'll be a place where if you're a member of the public, you don't necessarily care a lot about redistricting. You don't want to play with drawing district boundaries, but you do want to participate in this process. Simply providing information on where is a neighborhood or where is a community that should be kept whole will absolutely benefit this process. So as we advance. And I'll just note before I talk about this, and again, when I, my colleagues from Trepey Smith join in, they will talk about some of the opportunities for folks to identify their own community. Understandable boundaries is a pretty understandable concept, which is that you should be able, when this process is done, if somebody, you walk up to somebody on the street and describe what are the boundaries of District One, you should be able to describe that to them in a way that they would know what you are talking about. And that's what that is. That means looking at natural and artificial features like streets, like a park, or like a river, whatever those may be, things that people would know what you're, again, are talking about. If we advance. Compactness is the, something that there are political science professors who spend their entire careers trying to come up with very fancy mathematical formulas to try to define. But in California, you know, what it basically means is you need to be aware of shape and appearance. You need to understand why does a district look the way it does. Now, that does not mean that districts all need to be perfect squares. To the contrary, compactness is less important and a lower rank criterion than the ones I've already spoken about. So oftentimes, communities are not compact. They might stretch out along a freeway, for example. And that is, under California law, more important than just drawing pretty shapes. And again, in California law, specifically what the law talks about isn't, again, does your district look like a square? It talks about, are you bypassing one population to go grab a more distant population? And if you are doing that, you need to have a justification for that based on one of the other criteria I've already spoken about. And if we advance. So this is the, the four-letter word in redistricting. It's a little bit longer with gerrymandering. If, for folks who don't know, that term comes from the picture on the right, which was a district in Massachusetts in 1812 and was referred to as, is where the term gerrymandering comes from. Importantly, under California law, what the law says about this is two protections against gerrymandering. One is that local district boundaries shall not be adopted for the purposes of favoring or disfavoring a political party. And two, that you can't define a community of interest based on a political party incumbent or candidate. So those are some of those protections built into the law. And if we advance. So again, this is kind of just a summary of those criteria before we move on to the actual mechanics of how this works, which is we want districts that are roughly equal in size. And where they aren't in equal size, we need to make sure we understand why that's the case. We need to focus on those same traditional redistricting criteria that really drove the 2019, 2018, 2019 conversion to district elections. And we need to make sure that race isn't a predominant factor in the process. So as we advance here, so how do we actually do that? Well, there are two main data sources that we're going to use. The biggest of which is the census, which again, is conducted every 10 years. And the purpose is to count every single person. And I'm sure lots of people got, lots of, got the mail, they went online, they filled out that form. If you didn't, you had somebody knocking on your door, trying to make sure as many people participated as possible. That census data is reportable to the smallest geography that the census has, which we'll talk about in a moment, called a census block. The other data source I'll mention is what's called the American Community Survey, or ACS. It is different from the census in that the census is trying to count every single person, while the ACS is not that. It is a survey. And it is a survey where a sampling is done every month of every year. And then every five years, or every year, the five-year rolling average of that data is reported by a slightly larger set of geography called either block groups or tracks, which again, we'll talk about in a moment. The ACS is critical for jurisdictions that have responsibilities under the Federal Voting Rights Act. Again, that is not the case in Livermore, but is a source of a plethora of additional information about a jurisdiction that is not captured in the decennial census. So I mentioned the ACS because that is one of those places that if certain demographic information is required, at some point, we may dip into that ACS pool of data to kind of supplement what you already know about your own city. So if we advance. And this is the census geography that is used. And that, and the Lego blocks, the proverbial Lego box we'll be using for this process. The smallest of those are census blocks, of which there are about 1,300. The important thing here is that a census block is not the equivalent to a city block. Sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't. But they are the, the pieces we need to use to put together these new districts. And you see then the block groups and the tracks are much larger, less than 100 of each in the city. But that's as fine a granular level as we'll have for some of that American Community Survey data. So a lot less refined than those census blocks. And these are all nested within each other. So blocks add up to block groups, block groups add up to tracks and so on. So I think the Russian nesting dolls, that's the way census geography works. So for the public, giving the public 1,300 census blocks can be a little daunting for people who want to participate and want to propose district boundaries. So one of the tools we use to simplify and lower those barriers to participation as we advance the slide are what are called slices. And slices are something that are created by me. They're based on census geography. They're based on those understandable boundaries and they're based on your existing plan. And the city's been divided into 69 of these slices. And you see those on the right, and that makes it a little bit more approachable for people who maybe don't want to go through the process of drawing a plan online, but do want to at least propose maybe just one district, not four districts. And these slices are friendly because they allow for a paper tool, which we'll talk, which will be available before the 18th. So if people just want to literally take a piece of paper and draw their district, it'll allow that option. There's also an Excel tool that people will be able to use, where you just literally go through the 69 rows and say, I want this slice to be in District One. I want this slice to be in District Two. And then for those who want to go through a more involved process, we are also going to have an online option where people can sit on their computer and actually assign not just these 69 slices, but all 1,300 census blocks. So if we advance. So this is California law. And again, this is somewhat familiar actually to jurisdictions who went through the CVRA conversion, California Voting Rights Act conversion. In that, just like that, it requires four hearings. It requires you to have some hearings before you get to draft plans. So there's a reason that you're not seeing any proposed maps from me tonight, because law says not to. And that this first two hearings, the process we've set up in Livermore, are really the chances for the public to start providing input and for the, for the council to start providing then initial direction of what they may want to see in proposed district boundaries. And then that'll move us into phase two next year, where at that February 14th hearing, I will bring back at least three plans for the council to consider. Those will be obviously supplemented by any plans that are drawn by members of the public, all of which will be available for consideration. The council will then be able to, based on public input, decide what they like, decide what they don't, what, what works best for the city and make recommendations for changes. I will then then come back with refined lines in March, which will then again, be subject to public input and council feedback. And if necessary, we'll actually make changes live during that March hearing to further refine the lines so that then there are lines that are available again, because they need to be adopted under state law by April 17th. As we advance the slide. So between now and March, again, where can the public participate? And at that point, I will defer to my friends with Trepey Smith to talk about this a little bit. Or there are two big ways for the public to provide feedback at this stage, which is one, provide information on those communities of interest, answering the three big questions. Where is it? What makes it a community? And why is it important to be kept together? Or starting particularly, and we'll talk about this more in the workshop in a week, to submit their own plans and be able to submit those. And then after we get to the point where we have both public plans and any plans that I'm directed to draw, the public will be able to react to those plans and provide additional feedback at that point. Again, heading towards that target for a March adoption date. And with that, I will ask the staff to advance the slide. And the city has set up its own dedicated website for this. One thing I will note, under state law, the city is required to maintain that website for 10 years. So if in 2026, somebody is bored and wants to know, why did that district boundary get drawn there? That record will be maintained for the next 10 years. So as long as those lines are in use, there'll be that ongoing living public record of this process that we're going through over the next few months. And to talk a little bit more about the website and all the other efforts that are being done to have a robust public input, I will hand things over unless there's a request to have me answer questions first.
What we're going to do is ask if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on this. I'll open the public comment period on this.
We still have one more presentation, did you want?
Oh, oh, I see, okay. Well, all right. So we'll, we'll hold on that. We'll go to the other presentation and then everybody's got their heads up at which way we're going to do this.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I believe staff will be pulling up the slides here for my portion in a moment. Perfect, thank you very much. And my name is Jennifer Nentrig, a director with Trepey Smith, the public affairs and marketing firm partnering with the city and Wagaman Strategies to support communications regarding Livermore's current redistricting efforts. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and share an update with you about the outreach and engagement efforts so far regarding this important issue. Next slide, please. So on this slide, you'll see an outline for what I'll be sharing with you tonight, which is essentially an update on our outreach and engagement efforts so far and a high-level overview of some of the significant communication efforts moving forward. And this is also a good slide to really pause and touch on the why for all of the outreach and engagement. And it really follows up on what Mr. Wagaman had already shared, which is the fact that this process is very involved when it comes to the community and it requires public input on those communities of interest and on people's opinions and thoughts on proposed district lines and their own ideas for what the map could look like. So that is really why all of this outreach and engagement is so important in addition to legal requirements that Mr. Wagaman also touched on earlier. So next slide, please. So now first, we'll dig into the outreach and engagement efforts so far. As you can see on this slide here, and as Mr. Wagaman touched on, the city does now have a new dedicated website about redistricting. It's draw livermore.org, and it was rolled out on September 28th. And on that site, which you can see the screenshot here on the slide, it has extensive resources available to the public to learn about the process, access all the materials and meeting information, and to share feedback. And you can see in the screenshot that visitors to the website have the option of selecting their language. So it's available in dozens of languages on that dropdown where you can see select language. And it will be continually updated throughout the process, including resources such as press releases, meeting materials from each hearing and workshop posted to the calendar page. And there are also, also multiple opportunities to engage in the process via the website, including sending emails through that contact tab you can see there. And eventually by reviewing draft maps, once they're available on the draft maps page. And also, as Mr. Wagaman had mentioned, the community of interest information currently on the website, on the Draw a Map page, there are actually tools for people to provide their input or their maps regarding what their community of interest is and what it looks like. And we do anticipate making even more mapping tools available within the next week or so, leading up to that first community workshop scheduled for October 18th. And also of note, there is an option for members of the public to subscribe for ongoing updates where they can get emails whenever there is a, an upcoming event or news to share regarding redistricting moving forward. Next slide, please. And here you can see a screenshot of the press release that went out from the city on October 8th, announcing the process and the significant dates that represent opportunities for public participation moving forward. And our team built, helped build out a media contact list to receive this and other redistricting press releases to include the city's regular media contacts as well as other regional media interested in the process of redistricting in general. Next slide, please. And here you can see an example of the social media content that the city has shared so far. So this is an example of what has gone out on your Facebook page. You can see that it is in both English and Spanish, which we will continue moving forward. And our team is working with the city to develop and share one post a week moving forward regarding redistricting and the upcoming hearings, workshops, and other opportunities to get involved. Next slide, please. And in addition to helping engage with the community online and via traditional media, we're also committed to conducting direct outreach to community groups and organizations in Livermore to promote participation in the process. And you can see here is something that is required in the elections code language that agencies like the city must have a good faith effort to reach out to those civic engagement groups and community groups and organizations to help make them aware of redistricting. And we'll be asking them to share the information through their own groups as well. And if there is anyone who is listening this evening and feel like, feels like they would be interested in helping as one of those groups, by all means, please visit draw livermore.org and send something our way through the contact tab. Next slide. And now to address some of the significant efforts planned as we move forward. All right, and so for the outreach moving forward, as Mr. Wagaman and your city clerk mentioned, you are going above and beyond already by having your first virtual community workshop scheduled for next week on October 18th, and at 7:00 PM. So folks can find all of the participation information on draw livermore.org on that calendar page. And we'd be more than happy to have everyone who's listening tonight go ahead and participate. And then there are some additional add-on options that the city is welcome to add on to the engagement moving forward. So there would be the opportunity to have even more virtual community workshops and the possibility of an in-person community workshop or several. And then we can also add on any additional press releases throughout the process and on top of the two that we have already planned. So you're already doing great things. We have a solid engagement plan established, but it can be built out and fleshed out and grown that much more if that is a desire of the city. And then as we've talked about, the website content, social media content, press releases, all the outreach to the direct community groups, those are things that we'll continue to be doing to publicize each milestone with the upcoming hearings and other events moving forward. And so with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions you may have. And thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Okay, thank you both for the presentations. We'll open up the public comment period on this before we bring it back to the council. So city clerk, we remind people how to. comment period on this before we bring it back to the council. So uh, city clerk, will you remind people how to uh, participate?
Yes, Mayor. Participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person for this item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine of calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for this item. Raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce a conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. And Mayor, I can provide another um, summary of this as we go into citizens forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor, there are two requests to speak. The first speaker is Casey Farmer, followed by Kayoko Takayama. Casey Farmer, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, council members and members of the public. My name is Casey Farmer and I serve as the Director of Community Engagement for Alameda County's twenty twenty-one redistricting effort. Uh, I'll have to admit, I did not know that this item was agendized for tonight's meeting. I am just making my rounds to all city council meetings throughout Alameda County to announce that Alameda County's process is also underway. Uh, our deadline is by the end of this year. And we have been collecting communities of interest testimony for the last few months and holding our workshops respective to your process. Uh, our workshops for Alameda County. So just wanted to make sure that you are aware of this to point you to our website where you might find more information, multilingual materials, our full schedule, a short shareable video as well as our contact information and our online mapping tool, uh, which will be similar to yours. Uh, also, our next public hearing is tomorrow, Tuesday, October twelfth at twelve noon, followed by another hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth at six PM. Wanted to alert you of those. Our website is redistrictingtwentytwentyone.ac.gov.org. Thank you very much for your time this evening and I wish you well in your process in Livermore.
The next speaker is Kayoko Takayama. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, City Council members and the public. Uh, my name is Kyoko Takayama. I am uh, I have been working on community outreach since uh, census. Pandemic certainly did hinge uh, census effort. However, Livermore Indivisible was a county uh, census ambassador and we did actually uh, worked really close by in the community of Hispanic communities in Livermore. And uh, I'm also working on the county effort. And overall, uh, what I'm seeing is uh, public having hard time to understand the concept of the community of interest. And even like California's Season Three District Commission, which has fantastic website, uh, online outreach and everything. Uh, last I checked, Ca- uh, Bay Area, entire Bay Area only had hundred sixty-nine submission for the community of interest. And uh, I would hear how many we will have in the county. So uh, what I would like to suggest is to focus on community outreach, not online, because if nothing else, COVID told us, taught us not everybody has the online presence. And those are the most vulnerable population we need to protect. So um, I will be happy to uh, cooperate with the city and help reach every corner of Livermore. Uh, however, please do not rely on online and the website. And not only the farmers market and community center, because those people who are busy trying to survive is not be able to uh, go far and so forth. So I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you uh, both for your uh, comments. Uh, I'll bring it back, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council, see if there are any uh, questions. Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, thank you for those presentations and also for the uh, comments we just heard. I, I too have a, I have a question about communities of interest and, and I hadn't gone through this with the council um, in two thousand eighteen, which probably is true for a few of us. So I have a few maybe catch-up questions. So community of interest, it's there's, it's, it's defined as common social or economic interest, but it's not clear to me whether, the answer is probably both, but whether this is defined by people or by geography in some sense. Common social economic interest sort of infers uh, people, but we're talking about in the context of geographic boundaries. And of course, you can have people in the same, I assume that you can have people in a common, common community of interest that are spread out over the entire city and you can have sort of enclaves where people have shared cultures and shared interests. So I guess I'm just looking for a little clarity on how to think about communities of, of interest in this exercise. And I have two more questions that I hope can also be brief, though maybe we could hear the answer to that one first. That sounded reasonable.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to go in whatever order you prefer. Um, answer the question?
Yeah, let's go do that one. I think the other two are, are clear. Thank you.
So communities of interest are about people. So, and redistricting is really about people at the end of the day, right? District people are elected by other people, not by trees. Uh, but in order for a community of interest to be kept whole and redistricting, you have to be able to draw your boundaries around it. So you can't uh, have a community of interest of everyone who plays Magic the Gathering because you can't, you know, draw a boundary around them. So for a community of interest to be represented in the redistricting process, it has to be a set of people who you can again, draw a, a polygon around. Um, so uh, again, it is about people, but that geographic component isn't, is inextricably linked to it.
Okay, so uh, the answer is both and you can't necessarily capture a complete community of interest with one polygon. Um, but, but you, but there are places where they're highly overlapped is what I heard you say. Um, that was clarification for me. The second question is, why do we go to the trouble of slices where you end up with sixty-nine slices? But we have block groups that are, we have fifty-eight block groups. It sounds like roughly the same number. Is there some, was there some issue with the way block groups broke out and why fifty-eight block groups isn't as good as sixty-nine slices? Could you just explain that a little bit?
Sure. Uh, there are a couple of reasons why. One is that uh, block groups don't actually conform to city boundaries. So in some places you'll have a block group that's partially in Livermore and so, and partially not. So as a result, some of those block groups will be much more radically different in size because it might be just those fifty-eight slices might, or those fifty-eight block groups just a tiny bit might be in uh, within your city boundary. The other thing is that those uh, block groups uh, don't necessarily uh, conform to um, areas that are known pieces of um, uh, those uh, understandable boundaries within the city. Um, they are drawn by somebody in Washington DC. Uh, admittedly with local feedback, but in certain places, those block groups uh, may not be uh, the best representation of, you know, potential boundaries you would be looking at. And the other thing is with the block groups is that they don't necessarily conform to your existing district boundaries, uh, which the slices do. That doesn't in any way mean that the, that you need to keep your existing boundaries. It is not meant to bias towards keeping the existing boundaries. Rather, it is intended just to do the opposite, which is not biased towards making a change. It is meant to make sure that the process is neutral at the start and that the polygons aren't determining how people move forward and how people can participate.
Okay, that, that's great. Um, that clears that up. So my last question is, how does this process, you know, drive to closure? It looks like if I'm reading your timeline and your schedule chart correctly, you, you will come up with the draft plan. You, you come up with the draft plan, either working with staff or not working with staff, it's not clear to me. And it gets presented to us. Um, well, it gets presented back to the public in February and in March. I'm just trying to understand, when, when is the first look at what you, what you, based on input at the two workshops or the two opportunities for the public to provide input? Do you return back with a draft plan that we get to see for the first time and the public gets to see and they get to comment again and we get to comment and then we somehow wrap this all up by April seventeenth?
Yeah, so A, I want to emphasize that this really isn't my process. This is your process and this is Livermore's process. I really view myself as a facilitator. And my job is just to make sure that you're compliant with the law, to provide the technical expertise to put these together. And I emphasize that because it is not going to be a process where I just magically come back and all of a sudden here are a bunch of plans. So what will happen at that next hearing? Um, in, and I'm just bringing up the dates because I don't remember them off the top of my head, in that next hearing on uh, January twenty-fourth. Um, the, you'll, you're the uh, city staff and Tripepe Smith will have been working with the community to start building that first round of public feedback. The council will be able to review that information and then be able to provide direction to me of what you want to see or don't want to see in those potential draft maps. So it'll be you directing what you want to see in those plans. And that is what I'll put together after that January twenty-fourth meeting. And then I believe we uh, by uh, about a week after that, we're also asking that any publicly submitted plans be uh, turned in by then as well. So that for that February fourteenth meeting, you'll be able to see any plans that I put together again, based on your direction. And then any of those publicly submitted plans, because I don't pretend to have a monopoly on all the good ideas in the world. And then you'll be able to look at all of those at that third meeting in, in mid-February. Say what you like, say what you don't, say what else you want to see and what else you want to try, to then be able to see refined plans, which again, maybe based on something I did or maybe based on something submitted by the public uh, in March, make any final refinements and then be able to move forward with adopting new plans for the next ten years.
Okay, that, that's, that's clear. I mean, I really do appreciate this is our plan and that you're not, you're not running the show in that, in that regard, but you are the one that's synthesizing our input, the public's input first. And then with our comments back on what, what we've heard from them, you take it and you will be the one that first presents a draft plan that you've synthesized from a variety of inputs. So um, got it. That's very helpful. That's, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kik.
Hi, I just had one clarifying question. When you said that we're gonna see all the maps that the community puts together, will you or somebody be cross-referencing those to make sure that they meet guidelines um, before they come to us as, or are we gonna see everything even if they don't meet the requirements?
So I approach the process is that the, if the public has taken the time to draw a plan and submit it, that it should be presented to you. So that plan will be submitted now. If there's a publicly submitted plan that doesn't potentially meet legal criteria, we'll flag that for you. So for example, if the districts deviate by fifty percent from each other, uh, we'll run those statistics, we'll flag those issues, but we're not going to withhold information from the council because as noted, this is your process, not mine.
Great, thank you. I just, not, I'm not fast at math. So if you could flag those issues, that would be great rather than us doing that percentages.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi, uh, so thank you for a very clear presentation. Um, so I, I wanted to, I had one specific question about um, the dis- the, the differences in the current districts. Um, and then I had some questions about the process, um, sort of following up on how we get good data. Um, so the question, um, I, I looked at the eight percent difference. And while I recognize that, you know, eight hu- yeah, that's not ten percent, it's a little higher than I'd like. Um, I guess how concerned should we be about that, given that that's the number one criteria? And then there are several other, other criteria that, that follow. And you may, you may just say, well, take it into account. I'm, I'm not sure.
So what I would say is, and again, based on, on my expertise working on this issue, is that you do have a deviation between districts, uh, particularly districts one and two, districts three and four are very close. Uh, and, but where I do see those deviations, I can see in the map and, and I know from the record from the, the conversion process that those were all the results of other criteria. So you're looking at, for example, following understandable boundaries. You have those big straight nice lines that are following thoroughfare. So there's a reason why I would understand why you see those deviations. I would, uh, I'm not your council, C O N S E L, but looking at independently, I would say I would understand why you have those. Now, that doesn't mean that the uh, C O N C I L can't decide, you know what, we want have those districts be closer. We'd like to have close, uh, smaller deviations. So we're going to make a change in order to try to bring those down. That's the kind of direction you could provide. I'm only emphasizing that is a want versus a need. Uh, I have other jurisdictions nearby. Uh, if you think about like San Ramon and Dublin and some of those areas where there's been rapid growth, where they're having deviations of thirty, forty percent. And that's a little different situation where they, uh, even if they love their current.
Can anybody hear me?
Mr. Wyman, I don't know if you can hear us, but we can't hear you. So while we're waiting for him to come on, like uh, Vice Mayor, I can uh, speak a little bit, having been on the uh, council when we did it the first time. What you're basically addressing is, is the difference in percentages more important or less important than uh, saying communities of interest are gonna cross Livermore Avenue? That's, that's basically the uh, the point. Uh, I think we've lost.
I would also add, having been on it, that to even up one and two, there's a very little overlap. If you look in the map between one and two. And so I mean, that's a challenge, that was a challenge for us back uh, a couple of years ago.
I, I, I actually was following that fairly closely at that point. Um, so I, I, I did see that come out. I didn't realize what the difference was. I mean, I did, I did follow why the initial boundaries were um,
and Mr. Wyman is back online.
Great.
Apologizing for technology there. Uh, I hope you heard my answer to the question.
I, I, I heard enough of it. Um, and uh, as I was just saying, I, I'm actually somewhat familiar. I guess my um, wh- what I wanted to draw out of that was that there was a difference that it, what it resulted from. And actually in your explanation, what uh, comes through is that this is a place where precisely those um, distinctions, you know, those, those uh, where the balancing act takes place. So I think that's actually very helpful. Um, and uh, just a, 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 as a way of, of thinking about how to explain it. Um, I wanted to, to talk a little bit about the process of both reaching out and doing, and drawing community of interest boundaries. Um, so um, I uh, along um, with uh, with Kyoko actually is, is um, and um, Hayward City Council member, I see Hayward Mayor here, uh, Sarah Lambnun. Um, I'm, I'm part of the coalition that has been working to uh, towards uh, reaching out with Alameda County. And so with regard to that, I've taken a look at that website. I've filled out that form. Um, I'm pretty computer literate and I found it somewhat difficult. Um, I'm sort of paying attention to the California site. That's also somewhat difficult. So I am concerned about some assumptions that uh, going forward with Livermore, you know, sort of applying the same principles and concerned about the need to reach out to people who are gonna feel somewhat intimidated by the process, who may have trouble getting in in one way, who simply want to talk through why they feel about, you know, have a conversation. And I'm wondering um, whether that's how possible is that to do? Um, I actually found it challenging of, you know, um, and I'm, you know, I, I shouldn't in some sense.
So was that a question or just a?
Yeah, the question, well, it's a comment with sort of the, the, the direction to how do we make that happen? That, that would be the question. How do we make the reaching out happen in a, in a meaningful way?
Vice Mayor Monroe, this is your city clerk, Marie Weber. We are looking into other non-
We are looking into other non-electronic ways of outreach, um, including phone calls and things, resources like a peach jar. Um, I don't know if Miss Netwick has some other opportunities that we can, um, use with Trepeby Smith, but there may be some opportunities that we can come up with there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, I would second what your city clerk mentioned. We do have a flyer that is currently in work. And we've been talking with your staff about places where we can place that flyer and work with the community groups to also help partner with them in distribution. I would also note that Mr. Wagaman mentioned the, um, mapping tools and several of those are very user-friendly in print format. So we'd be happy to have the flyers together with those paper mapping tools and make those accessible in various locations across the city.
And I'll add that that's really something I believe in firmly is uh, lots of people sometimes view just like, oh, we're going to put an online tool player on districts. Everybody's going to use that and everyone's gonna, that's going to solve your process. And as you noted, it's a much more complicated process. And I think you had a member of the public call in earlier emphasizing those same issues that some people may not actually care about the district boundaries, but they really want to make sure their neighborhood's capable. And you have to provide that opportunity. Some people are not particularly computer literate and you need to make sure you have those paper options available for people. Um, some people like their calculators and, and like their Excel spreadsheets and like doing it that way versus drawing on, you know, pictures on a screen. So everybody's different, so providing those different opportunities really will ensure you have a robust process.
Thank you both, I appreciate that, it's all three of you, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Carling, you, uh, need to ask any question at this point?
No, I'm good, I've done this before, so.
Yeah, so I'll.
Thank you.
Uh, me too, and I enjoyed, uh, working through the process, Mr. Wagaman, in the past. I, I would just say my own observation is, this is a really complex problem. You know, and I've worked on many over the years, a lot of variables and a lot of constraints. And I think, uh, I found it interesting, the number of different creative solutions or suggestions the public had. So looking forward to that again. Uh, well, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, one is, I just want to make clear, there are no new factors in the methodology algorithms compared to last time. I think you, what you said, they were renamed, but it's not different in terms of the concept or the math, is that correct?
The basic traditional redistricting criteria, which is the term of art, haven't changed. So the law did change, uh, and sometimes this was that terminology. So again, moving from topography, geography to understandable, uh, boundaries. Uh, the two big things that were changes were that they did rank those criterion now or criteria now, so that is a change. Uh, that ranking isn't something that was inconsistent though with the, the way the city approached the C V R A conversion. And two is they did put in that prohibition against drawing lines, uh, to favor or disfavor a political party or defining a community of interest, basically in partisan, uh, campaign electoral terms. Uh, but those weren't something that again, were part of your past process. So it's just something you wanted, that you wouldn't want to add, that's new, would be new this time, but certainly wasn't a part of the process last time.
Yeah, we didn't consider it last time and so being prohibited from doing that means no change. That's what I heard. And the second thing I want to make, uh, sure of, you'll be presenting a number of alternative feasible plans. But I think what you heard, uh, what you said was that given the new census data, the current map is one of those feasible district, uh, districting options, is that correct?
Correct, so if one of the options that you wanted brought forward would be, uh, we'd like to have a status quo plan, be one of those options, then absolutely that is something that the council could direct.
And at what point do we do that?
So that's going to be that hearing number two, where after you've had the public input, you would be able to provide direction of what you want to see in those draft plans.
Okay, well, then, thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Okay, I think we're, uh, close out this item. And, uh, uh, thank you very, both of you very much for, uh, your presentations. I think, uh, it's, uh, clear what we have to do, but I think not everybody's going to remember everything that was said, so I'm glad it's been, uh, recorded and people have the, uh, tools to go find out exactly all the details here. So thank you very much. So we're on now to a, um, really fun, uh, uh, proclamations and presentations section. And very pleased that, uh, Mayor Barbara Halliday from Hayward is here to, uh, join us. And thank you for, um, uh, hanging in there for the first part of the meeting. And, and so, the, uh, I'll, uh, so we're gonna, we're fortunate to have Mayor Halliday, uh, present us with the, um, the award. And, uh, before we do that, I've got a few, um, introductory, uh, remarks here, if I may. Just to set this up. So the, the city of Livermore was named a twenty-twenty-one All-America City uh, at the National Civic League's All-America City Awards Ceremony on June ninth, twenty-twenty-one. The theme of this year's competition was building equitable and resilient communities. Livermore's delegation, uh, competed against nineteen other finalist cities from across the country with a ten-minute live virtual presentation, followed by a question and answer session centered on the city's community-driven projects addressing youth, mental health, anti-vaping policy and education, equity, inclusion and social justice, and affordable housing and homelessness. The Livermore delegation was comprised of students, community members and staff from the city of Livermore, the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District, Los Pizitas College, and the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District. The presentation illustrated the shared vision, civic engagement, inclusiveness, collaboration, and innovation within the city that has resulted in positive changes and growth for the citizens of Livermore. The National Civic League has recognized and celebrated the best in American civic innovation with the prestigious All-America City Award since nineteen forty-nine. Now here to speak on behalf of the National Civic League is one of its board members and fellow mayor, Bar, uh, Mayor Barbara Halliday from the city of Hayward. Uh, Bar, uh, Mayor Halliday?
Hello, thank you Mayor Warner. And, um, yes, in addition to being the mayor of the city of Hayward, uh, um, I am also a member of the Board of Directors of the National Civic League. And I'm really, um, thrilled to be here tonight with you to present this very well-earned award um, to a fellow Alameda County city, the city of Livermore, uh, as one of the National Civic League's twenty-twenty-one All-America Cities. And you know, Hayward actually competed in twenty-sixteen and, and was also named an All-America City after going through all of what you just talked about, you went through. Although we had the, we got to do it in Denver and I'm sorry that you didn't have that same experience and we're living in this virtual world these days. But you know, in thinking about it, I really think in the long run, perhaps your award is going to have even more significance for you as a city because, um, you are, you know, all of our cities are going to have their stories to tell of this time of pandemic. This, this will be a, a time that will be long remembered by everybody who's gone through it and probably people to come. And so part of Livermore's story is going to be, um, winning this award. And, um, I, even though you didn't get to travel together to Denver, I'm sure you had this, um, a really good, uh, experience bonding with each other as you, as you, you know, competed with the applicant, first the application that was, um, you know, judged by a panel of experts. And then being selected from all the applications that had been submitted from throughout the country to, uh, compete as one of twenty with the virtual, with the, uh, ten-minute virtual presentation that you did in June. Um, and I'll, I'll tell you that I, I watched many of the presentations, including Livermore's. I really made it a point to watch your presentation and I wasn't at all surprised when I heard you had won because you, you did an outstanding job. And I know the judges, and I was as well, really, were really impressed with, um, the, um, many young leaders of your, of your community that, um, participated in this presentation. I have to say, I think the, um, the teen mental health first aid pilot program sounded really interesting. And, um, and I, I was really, um, you know, glad to hear about that and, and I'm thinking about, um, borrowing it for Hayward. Um, I also thought pictures for people was very interesting and the goodness village. And, you know, um, borrowing the ideas, it, it isn't the same as stealing. It, it's really sharing good ideas is a big part of what the National Civic League is about. You know, to help all of us make our communities, uh, better for the people who live and work in them. So, um, so anyway, I, that's all part of why, of why this is an important thing for you to have achieved. And so with that, it is my honor to recognize Livermore as a National Civic League twenty-twenty-one All-America City and to virtually present the award plaque, which, uh, I believe is already, yes, in the possession of Mayor Warner there. And just want to say in closing, congratulations to everyone involved in being a part of this, um, of your presentation and your effort. And I know a lot of hard work went into it and I know that hard work is continuing every day and you're in the city of Livermore, so congratulations.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Halliday, really appreciate all your very kind words. And I, I would like to thank on behalf of all Livermore, the National Civic League for recognizing the incredible work being done in our community. We have an active and engaged community full of citizens as all ages, as you mentioned, who care deeply about their city, their neighbors, and affecting positive change for future generations. Uh, the Livermore community has stepped up time and again to take action, to protect each other, to serve our vulnerable populations and to create a welcoming and inclusive community. This award was won by all of Livermore and I look forward to the amazing work we'll continue to do together. And now our school superintendent, Dr. Kelly Bowers, who worked so hard on this award, will say a few words.
Good evening. As Superintendent of Schools for the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District, I couldn't be more pleased or proud to have taken part in and contributed in any way to the city of Livermore's recognition as an all-American city. So on behalf of our LVJUSD Board of Trustees, who are actually on this call tonight as well, and fourteen-hundred-plus staff members and over thirteen thousand two hundred students, I would thank first the National Civic League for this memorable opportunity. This prestigious national recognition is a tribute to the wonderful and unique town we call home and all of the incredible people who live and work here. All of Livermore, not just those of us who are on the call tonight. All of Livermore share in this honor as we're made up of so many amazing individuals. And I'm particularly proud to echo Mayor Holiday who, from Hayward, I'm particularly proud of how our youth were showcased throughout the competition. It's really clear that our young people's high level of engagement, passion, advocacy and leadership in critical areas like anti-vaping, mental health and wellness, and advancing equity and inclusion really made us stand out by comparison to other cities across our nation. I'd like to acknowledge these amazing students that represented us. Owen Fidler, Mariah Shodri, Will Taggart, Emma Gulart and Cassandra Torres for their contributions, as well as many Livermore staff members. Roxy Pittman, Lisa Hannah Danner, Lynn Gardner, Dorina Bell and Zach Radicki, to name a few. They really helped make it happen. But my sense is that even though the award's considered a city recognition, in our particular case, as Mayor Warner just referenced, it represents far more. It really could be the All-American Community Award. It exemplifies the strong partnering agencies and community members who continually collaborate and come together and work through any issues or challenges that come our way, even a global pandemic. It was also an exciting bonus that Livermore Shakespeare Festival's Kids Teach Shakespeare was awarded the top national prize for cultural entertainment. That was quite a distinction. And I would be remiss if I didn't shout out to Stephanie Agudio from the city of Livermore and our LVJUSD Community Engagement Department, Philomena Rambo, Michelle Dawson, Stacy Kinnison, Leslie Lemieux. You did so much coordinating behind the scenes that helped make sure that we represented well. And in closing, I will say that Livermore School District appreciated being included in the delegation along with our partners, the city, the L A R P D and Los Pizitas College. Because not only do we share in the honor, this whole process of working together on the application brought us a lot closer together. And we all know that we are hashtag stronger together. So thank you and congratulations to all.
So, thank you, Dr. Bowers. And now we have, uh, Dr. Darrell Foster, Los Pizitas College President. He will say a few words, Dr. Foster?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. First, I'd like to congratulate the city of Livermore for being named a two thousand twenty-one All-America City. What a great honor and Los Pizitas College is proud to have been a partner in this project. I'd like to also commend the city council for your leadership in forming the city's Equity and Inclusion Working Group uh, to address inequities and social justice issues within our community. I'm happy to say that Los Pizitas College has been and continues to be a partner with the city in our shared commitment to social justice, inclusion and equity. The work that our college has done to reimagine our public safety training program by creating new curriculum and establishing a new certificate focused on twenty-first century policing demonstrates our commitment to this work as was highlighted as part of this collaborative project. I'd like to thank the leadership from the city and the Livermore Police Department for being great partners in this effort. And the goal of our new program is to provide educational opportunities to support long-term improvements to the ways in which our local law enforcement agencies within our region interact with and bring positive change within our community. So on behalf of Los Pizitas College, I'm excited and look forward to continuing to work with you, city staff and all of our wonderful partners within the city to take the necessary actions to systemically address equity and inclusion within our community. So congratulations again to the city, to the city staff, uh, Dr. Bowers for her leadership and everyone who made this award possible, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. Uh, unfortunately, um, Matt Pusey, General Manager of L A R P D, uh, couldn't be with us this evening at the last moment, but that was another organization that contributed greatly to our winning, uh, competition this year. So at this point, I'd like to, uh, now turn it over to, uh, Councilmember Bob Carling, who participated in the presentation for Livermore and who would also like to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the opportunity to share my perspective. I felt very honored to participate in this opportunity, incredibly proud to represent our community. I'd like to share a few highlights, that some of which you've already heard, but I think is important and bear repeating. To begin, one person we should thank is Dawn Ergula. She's the CEO of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce. And she emceed our presentation and kept everything rolling and, and keeping it on time, so thank you, Dawn. As Dr. Bowers mentioned, the judges were quite impressed with the inclusion of Livermore and Granada High School students. And it was clear that they had a passion and a commitment for their involvement in projects related to youth mental health, anti-tobacco and anti-vaping education. We also had youth representatives and adults from our Equity and Inclusion Working Group describing their involvement in creating a more welcoming and inclusive environment in Livermore. The presentation concluded with our comprehensive collaborative approach to address food insecurity and the means that we're using to provide housing for all income levels. We highlighted, for example, affordable housing statistics and mentioned, as mentioned earlier, also a report on Goodness Village. The ongoing collaboration amongst Livermore's community partners and agencies was key to the city earning this prestigious award. And before ending, I'd like to echo, as Dr. Bowers, uh, mentioned, that there was a virtual cultural entertainment showcase in which the public got to vote for their favorite submissions. And of the twenty-three submissions, as Dr. Bowers mentioned, our own Livermore Shakespeare Festival Kids Teach Shakespeare took home first prize, so congratulations to them as well. Thank you, and back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you, uh, Councilmember Carling. Uh, we just celebrated our collaboration and civic engagement here in Livermore, uh, that led to this prestigious award. And now I'd like to tell you about how we built on the award to, uh, further engage the community. Uh, this past summer, this, uh, the city, the school district staff invited the community to participate in a photo contest, asking community members to share photos of why Livermore is an all-American city to them. Uh, commissioners from the Commission for the Arts selected winners in various age categories. And here to display the winning photos is Stephanie Agudio, Livermore's Communications Manager.
Hello, everyone, good evening. As Mayor Warner explained, we held a community-wide photo contest and asked members of our community to show us why Livermore is an all-American city to them. We also asked for a short description about their photo and why it's rep- We also asked for a short description about their photo and why it's representative of Livermore as an All-American City. Contest was open from July twenty-third through September tenth. I'll now share the winning photos from the various age categories. First up, we have Clara, a young community member who explains that this photo shows that the people in Livermore are proud of being American. Next is Lorelai's photo, another youth member here in Livermore, who explains that this photo of a fire expresses the welcoming nature of the community. Lorelai was welcomed by a tight family and captured this moment with them. Here's a photo by young community member Avery Kennison, and Avery expresses that this photo shows the beauty of Livermore and represents how incredible it is. She goes on to explain, "The movement of the color in the clouds represents the differences in the people who live here. The hills are the ups and downs that we experience as a community, and the sun is the bright light that holds us all together and united as one city." In our adult age category, we have three winners. This photo is by Allison, and Allison explains that Livermore is a bridge into the future. Allison believes the citizens of Livermore rise to the challenge and embrace the future with innovation and excellence. Michaela Kiernan submitted this photo and explains how it signifies the grassroots of this All-Americanity, where it all started over one hundred years ago. And Michaela mentions a local favorite here, the Livermore Rodeo. Here we have a photo of the Livermore Rodeo by Liam, who explains that it is part of Livermore Western history dating back to nineteen eighteen. Known as the world's fastest rodeo, people come from across the country to experience it. We have two honorable mentions, and they are Hunter's photo here of one of the residences at Goodness Village, which to Hunter is a symbol for change, a change of how the greater Tri-Valley sees and understands homelessness, but also a symbol of change for its residents, and how through housing security and healthy community, anything is possible when someone is supported and given the chance for a fresh start. And lastly, we have Alice's photo of bright California poppies in Alice's neighborhood. Alice explains that Livermore is an All-American City because of the beautiful, vibrant community here. And there we have it. These will be on display in the Civic Center Library at a future date, and these community members will also receive certificates from Mayor Warner.
Well, thank you. I think the, uh, the photos are fantastic, along with the sentiments that are expressed uh, by the people that took them. I think it's, it's great. Looking forward to seeing it at the library. And that is really a, a wonderful build on, on getting the award and makes it even, uh, you know, live with us, uh, even more, I think. The, uh, thing I want to, um, just say in closing is that this, this award uh, was it was a joint effort, as we've heard, that only resulted from the, uh, great collaboration amongst our agencies such as, and, and as such, uh, this plaque will be shared with the, uh, school district, Los Pecitas College, and the Livermore Area Park and Recreation District. The thought is that we'll rotate it from one to the other throughout the year, or perhaps we can, uh, get some duplicates made so we don't have to carry them around. But I think we're all so very proud of the effort that we did to the, uh, to collaborate to get this. And again, I want to thank, uh, Mayor Halliday for, uh, presenting us with the award and, and for, you know, the, uh, the judgment that, that had us win it. So thank you very much for being here. And as I think, as you can see, we really appreciate having one, and, uh, we're very happy. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Warner. It was well deserved, and I'll let you get on with your meeting, but you'll, you'll enjoy displaying that award, I think, and and, and, and just the memories too will be great. So, so congratulations again.
Okay, thank you so much. So we're, um, let me see if I can get to the, uh, we're up for the next piece here. There's another, um, uh, proclamation. Let me get set up for that, if I may. It'll take me a second. I think, um, you know, with recent events, and this is very, you know, as many are around the world, very heartbreaking, but what happened in Afghanistan, I think, has gotten all of our attention. And, um, men, you know, many throughout the country have asked for people to, um, to step up and help. And I think what we have here, I've got another proclamation. Let's see, we can, we can read it. It's a little hard. But it's a, um, "Supporting and welcoming Afghan refugees and the people of Afghanistan on October eleventh, twenty twenty-one." And the, um, sorry, uh, reading it, not, not all of it, but the highlights. "Whereas in February twenty twenty, the Afghan Taliban signed a peace agreement with the United States ahead of a proposed withdrawal of US troops. And in April twenty twenty-one, President Biden announced that US military forces would leave Afghanistan by September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, after a twenty-year conflict. And whereas the ongoing uncertainty and violence in Afghanistan and the takeover of the Afghan government by the Taliban has created a humanitarian crisis with rapidly deteriorating human rights and reductions in safety, particularly for vulnerable inter- individuals. And whereas many Afghan citizens, government employees, interpreters, translators, and Afghan National Defense and Security Forces personnel who supported our service members while they were serving in Afghanistan now find their lives and their family lives in jeopardy under the Taliban rule. And whereas the Bay Area, home to the largest concentration of Afghans, Afghans and Afghanis, Afghan-Americans in the United States, and therefore state and local leaders have the unique and moral responsibility to welcome Afghan refugees into our communities and showing support for the Afghan community during this difficult time. And whereas the City Council believes that a city can best stand against bigotry, intolerance, and hate through leading by example and living our shared community values and of welcome and inclusion and respect, now therefore, the City Council, the city of Livermore, urges our state and federal leaders to act immediately and with determination and rightfully bring at-risk and vulnerable Afghan peoples and their families to the United States for safety and prosperity and be afforded full benefits to transition into American life. And the council supports and welcomes refugees from Afghanistan into our community and calls upon our residents, community leaders, businesses, faith-based organizations, and community-based organizations to welcome and support these Afghan families to achieve their inherent right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So thank you. Okay, we are now on to, uh, Citizens Forum. And, uh, in conformance of the Brown Act, no city council action can occur on items presented during Citizens Forum. And, uh, at this point, will the city clerk, uh, further, uh, explain the process, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. First, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during Citizens Forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Second, for agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer questions from the City Council, and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to also add that, uh, what we'll do is have, uh, allocate thirty minutes for the, um, public, uh, Citizens Forum at this point, and any remaining comments uh, will be heard, uh, after matters for consideration. And right now, it's, uh, eight-thirty, so at nine o'clock, we'll, uh, wrap this up for and finish it later in the meeting if we go to that point. Uh, do we have any members of the, um, public that wish to, um, address us, uh, for Citizens Forum at this point?
Yes, Mayor, there is one request to speak. The first speaker is Jackie Coda. Please unmute yourself.
This week, we saw Christie Wong from the school board on Love Livermore social media site say, quote, "There's been a lot of pushback from public safety officers against vaccines and masks. In some places, they've sued or resigned. I was at a festival recently that required masks, and not a single one of the many police officers working there was wearing a mask or even had one in sight. How can it be anything but political? It sure isn't about public safety," unquote. Then a member of the community said, "If any of these officers have any history of accepting other vaccines, they should be denied." Then Christie went on to say, "Maybe their religion is specifically against the COVID-nineteen vaccine." Winky smiley face. Then Trish Monroe chimed in and said, "Religious exemptions against vaccines are largely made up for political reasons. Actual relig- religious doctrine in virtually every religion accepts and encourages vaccine vaccinations. Just as it is important to push back on the political arena against this kind of talk, parentheses, free speech, AKA, you aren't the boss of me, it is important to push back in the religious arena. I'll speak for the Jewish perspective across the Jewish denominations, including most, not all, Orthodox streams. Protecting life is the highest value. Getting a vaccine is part of that," unquote. Find it interesting that Ms. Monroe and Ms. Wong decide to mock community members' religion and science. The Bible very clearly states that the body is a temple of the Holy Spirit, and we're commanded to take care of it, not to defile it, and certainly not to introduce something into it that would potentially harm it. The Bible also outlines the fact that God created the body both fearfully and wonderfully. COVID-nineteen shots work as gene therapy by manipulating genetic operations. The COVID-nineteen shots alter what God made literally, assuming the position of God, which I believe is to be sinful practice under these circumstances. These so-called vaccines, by the very disclosure of the vaccine manufacturers, contain carcinogens and H E K, human embryo kidney cells. It's unfortunate that we have members, leaders of our community that are mocking citizens' religion and science. Not only that, these shots are only used, utilized under EUA, predicated upon an alleged emergency which has never materialized. Not only that, we have constitutionally guaranteed rights secured under the First, Fourth, and Eighth, Ninth Amendments. But we've continued to see our leaders mock the public. It's very interesting that Ms. People, people like Ms. Monroe and Ms. Wong think that they know more about our personal health and religious choices than we do. Ms. Wong clearly states that this is political for them.
There are no more requests to speak.
Mayor Warner, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. The, uh, we closed Citizens Forum, and we're now on to the, uh, consent calendar. Is there, uh, and these are matters of routine, uh, nature and act of honor of the City Council with a single action, and members of the audience wishing to provide public input must use the raised hand feature. At this point, do we have any members of the public that wish to, uh, speak to any of the items on the consent calendar?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the, uh, public comment on the consent calendar and bring it back to the, uh, council. Is, uh, there we go, Councilmember Banano.
Oh, yeah, I, I just want to make a comment on five point seven, which is the, uh, submission of the annual report from Livermore Downtown, Inc., and the annual, uh, grant allocation. So I, I, as the liaison for LDI, I just wanted to, uh, thank them for the report, which is very thorough and I think really does a really excellent job to describing what they'd accomplished this year, and also just commend them and the board, their staff, um, Executive Director, Senate Corps, staff, and the board for just what I think is really um, excellent job that they've done through very challenging times. I think they've actually managed to execute their primary mission, which is to help downtown businesses, to support the city, um, and to enhance economic growth overall. And I, I just think they managed to pull that off um, with very different conditions than they're usually, uh, working under. So I just thought that they deserve to shout out and, um, appreciation for helping our businesses in ways that were not the typical ones they needed to. And I thought that, uh, they were, yet again, a, a, another year partnering with, with us and accomplishing the, the goals that they are, uh, in place to do. So I just wanted to say that, and I would, uh, be happy to move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, and, uh, Vice Mayor Monroe? On mute?
A second. Yeah, I'm working on it, seconding.
Yeah, it's good. Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, any further comment? If not, do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Cake?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. Okay, passes unanimously. We're now on to, uh, public hearings. And, uh, first one is six dot one, hearing to receive and consider protests related to the annual fire hazard abatement program and confirm the twenty twenty-one weed abatement assessments for collection on the county assessor tax roll. And the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to introduce Ryan Rucker, our fire marshal, who's going to lead us through the presentation on this item. Let's see. Ryan?
Good evening, uh, good evening, our honorable mayor, council, and council members. I'm Ryan Rucker, the Fire Marshal for the Livermore Pleasant Fire Department. On March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, council adopted resolution number twenty twenty-one zero thirty-five, declaring existing conditions of growing weeds, accumulated refuse, rubbish, or dirt on private properties, streets, parkways, and sidewalks adjacent to each parcel of real property are a public nuisance and should be abated. On April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, council ordered the abatement of hazardous vegetation on the parcels identified in Exhibit A of the attached resolution and declared that the abatement costs, including administrative costs incurred by the city, are the responsibility of the property owner. The schedule has been provided to all property owners, which include abatement timelines, types of work needed based on the parcel type, as well as the administrative costs, which are charged when the city performs the abatement. The Fire Department concluded hazardous vegetation abatement on three parcels in July of twenty twenty-one at a total cost of twenty-three hundred seven dollars. The public hearing tonight is to consider any and all protests, and if council finds it appropriate, adopt a resolution overruling protests, confirm the twenty twenty-one weed abatement assessments, and direct staff to afford a certified copy of the assessment report to the county auditor. Staffs available for questions in the council.
At, uh, this point, have we, uh, received any protests on this?
I don't believe we have.
Okay, I'd like to open it up for, uh, public comment, and this could include the opportunity for people, I guess, to, uh, protest. Uh, city clerk, do we have anybody who wishes to address this on six dot one?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the, uh, public comment on that, bring it back to the council. Any, uh, questions? And if not, anybody want to make the motion?
Almost have recommendation.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a, a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Cake?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. Passes unanimously. We've, uh, already taken care of six dot two, and we're now on to seven dot one, matters for consideration. I'm so used to- And we're now on to seven dot one, matters for consideration. I'm so used to this great report being six dot one, but I think we all can go on, you know, learn new things. So we're, seven dot one is the oral report from our Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID nineteen emergency.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Let me go ahead and share my screen here. All right, wanted to start off this evening discussing what's new. So last week, we had an announcement from the nine Bay Area jurisdictions that require face coverings in most indoor public spaces. The Bay Area jurisdictions, health officers reached consensus on criteria to lift those health orders under certain circumstances. That includes the counties of Alameda, Contra Costa, Marin, Napa, San Francisco, San Mateo, Santa Clara, Sonoma, and the city of Berkeley. So what was actually announced last week was the criteria that each of those counties will use, and they will independently apply that criteria to their individual counties. And when the criteria is met, then the regional or county-based orders will be rescinded. This, of course, does not impact federal masking rules, for example, that deal with transportation, or state masking rules that deal with healthcare in some cases, but would deal with the locally recommended and imposed orders from Alameda County. You can see the three criteria there on the screen that we reach a, the moderate zone, where, which is yellow on the CDC criteria. And we're currently at orange, so we're one click up from that. The hospitalizations in the county are low and stable. And eighty percent of the county's total population is fully vaccinated, or eight weeks have passed since COVID nineteen has been authorized for use for five to eleven-year-olds. One thing about that eighty percent is that it's an eighty percent number of the total population, rather than the eligible population, which are the numbers that you, that I report to you, that the county actually does. So that eighty percent would include all folks, those who are both eligible to get the vaccine and those who are currently not eligible to get the vaccine. So that number's a little different than the numbers that I'm going to be reporting a little later, which are going to be the vaccination rates for eligible folks, and that's generally anyone who is twelve years and older at the current time. Wanted to give a quick update on the COVID Task Force. The Task Force wrapped up its duties between last meeting and this meeting. And I wanted to note a few of the significant achievements of the Task Force. So reoccurring vaccination clinics were started under the Task Force's direction and will run through November twenty first. There were public service announcement videos, and current and consistent data is being displayed on the website. We coordinated with the door program focused in Livermore, and that's an out, direct outreach program to make sure that people are notified. Worked with the county on developing the county incentive program, get fully vaccinated, get a hundred dollars, and the ongoing commitment from the county of continued collaboration and data sharing. And as a part of that task force, the county is sharing much more robust and deep data with us on both vaccinations as well as the progress of COVID. And both of those items are moving in the right direction. Our local vaccine clinics, we've had a number of them. You can see there the Springtown Library and on ten twelve, so that's just tomorrow. And then eight weeks of pop-up vaccinations, and they're going to be on Sundays. And you see the dates there for May Nissan, which is October twenty fourth and thirty first, and November seventh and twenty first. And then that same Sunday slot, it will actually move to the farmer's market on October seventeenth and November fourteenth. Anybody get vaccinated at those clinics is eligible for the county's vaccine incentive program as well. Wanted to provide an update from the school district. Council asked for information at our last meeting. And so ninety-two percent of the employees for the school districts have provided proof of vaccination and the remainder are tested weekly. And they have been very lucky, they've had very few cases among their employees. Roughly a hundred and forty students have tested positive in the first six weeks of school. On average, there are about four and a half cases a day. And student safety is a priority, so they do have indoor masking, distancing when possible, and are emphasizing hand hygiene. And of the thirteen thousand two hundred students in the district, about two hundred have elected to utilize the independent study option. Regarding our local businesses, Livermore's commercial eviction moratorium, which the council passed, was last updated on March tenth, twenty twenty one. And at that time, the commercial eviction moratorium was tied to Governor Newsom's executive orders, and those expired on September thirtieth. So the commercial eviction program, both statewide and locally here, has ended. State and county continue to have residential eviction protections and rental assistance programs, and we are aligned with those programs. With vaccination rates on the rise and COVID positive testing counts continuing to decline, as we are doing our checks every weekend and working with businesses, they are reporting that patrons are returning to indoor dining. Staff is meeting with downtown merchants this week to discuss next steps in the flex zone program. Of course, what we would traditionally do in November is to remove those flex zones out of the parking areas. And that allows for a greater visibility and more parking for the fourth quarter, which is our retailer's busiest time of year. So we continue to work with downtown merchants in finalizing our next steps for that program, and I'll be reporting back to you at the next update on this. In addition to what we're doing this season, we're exploring permanent changes to our flex zone program, including expanding the number of spaces that we provide for outdoor dining. This year, that number was dramatically expanded, more than two times, almost three times the number that we would traditionally allow. And our current codes provide strict guidance on how many spaces should be used for outdoor dining. So we're looking to come up with number perhaps somewhere between what we did this last year during, during COVID and what we'd done a couple of years ago. So we'll be working with downtown businesses to come up with recommendations for a new program and be returning to council with those recommendations. Some graphs here to give you a picture of what I've said with words. And this stretches back to June, and you can see these are Alameda County and city of Livermore, seven-day rolling average, new COVID cases per hundred thousand population. You'll see our numbers are a little bit more jagged, and that's to be expected with a smaller population base than Alameda County. But you see, we follow the same pattern, except this last time, we did have a much sharper spike in our case counts, peaking essentially near the end of August. But since that time, both countywide numbers and citywide numbers have dropped dramatically. And this, of course, is being mirrored across the entire United States as the Delta variant ultimately works through the population. So our seven-day rolling average as on October second in Livermore is six point six. And in Alameda County, the seven-day rolling average as of that same date is seven point two. So we have, for the first time, crossed back over Alameda County, and now we're just a little bit below. So very good news on that particular front. Can see here, this is a screenshot today off of the county's website on vaccinated versus unvaccinated. That top line, the yellowish line, is unvaccinated and the bottom line is vaccinated there. Then you'll see while both did rise in response to the Delta variant, the rise in the unvaccinated cases was much sharper, although both of those sets now of lines are coming down. You see here just a comparison of sort of trends, starting at the top here with vaccinations. This is the percentage of fully vaccinated folks, and this is the percentage of folks who are eligible to be vaccinated. So this is not the total population in both Alameda County and Livermore. And you can see a couple of good things there. Both in the county, between nine twenty-seven and ten eleven, our numbers continue to increase of the percentage of the population which is vaccinated, with Alameda County being seventy-nine percent of eligible folks and Livermore being seventy-two percent. Now, not displayed on this slide, but another piece of interesting data is we are finding that the vast majority of people who do get their first shot do follow up with a second shot. There's very little loss there. And so just to give you a hint about where we're headed, in Livermore, we've got over eighty-three percent of the population who's had a first dose. So that's a really encouraging sign that over the next few weeks, we should expect our numbers to continue to rise. And part of that, of course, is the outreach that we have done and we're working with our communities to make it easier and make that information available to folks who wanted to get information or to get a vaccine. You can also see here that the seven-day rolling average cases, these are cases per hundred thousand, both for Alameda County and for the city of Livermore, have dropped dramatically with an extremely sharp drop in Livermore, just from nine eighteen to ten two. You can see the, the very sharp drop in our numbers there. So very good information. Now, I don't have a slide on this next one, but I do want to touch on the fact that we are under a red flag warning. And so we have high winds throughout the community, and so that's a, of course, a disaster of a different type, which is in extreme wind events, a red flag warning means that there's an extreme danger of fire within the county, especially the hills surrounding Livermore. So that, we will be under that red flag warning throughout tomorrow. Staff will be monitoring that situation. We place additional staff on standby, especially for the wind event, to respond to downed trees in the public right of way and to respond to other public property wind-related damage. So I would encourage everybody to be particularly careful as you're out and about during high wind events to make sure that we remain safe there. And then finally, the one item is the numbers have stabilized dramatically on the case counts. And so I would recommend to the council, and I'd be open to your feedback on this one, that we move this briefing from every meeting to once a month. And so certainly open to feedback on that one. And of course, if the situation changes and the numbers start to go up again, or we have other challenges, we would absolutely be able to adjust that back to an every meeting briefing. And with that, I'll wrap up my report this evening, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, I'll open up the public comment on this before we bring it back to the council. Thank you for your report. Do we have any members of the public that wish to address us on this?
Yes, Mayor, there is one request to speak. Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
We can clearly see by the numbers that you've been presenting that there is no emergency. There has never been an emergency that has panned out. And cases do not mean death, nor do they mean sickness, especially with a PCR test that has been dubbed as fraud and defunct and will be removed from being used by the end of the year. So I'm curious, since according to Health and Safety Code ten ten eighty, when you have a dubbed said emergency, like the city of Livermore does, you're supposed to review it every seven days and report out to the public. So since you're not going to be doing that anymore, are you prepared to now cancel the emergency for which we are not in and we have never been in? We've never been in extreme peril, and we never will be in extreme peril. Even Norway and Denmark have reduced COVID to the typical influenza A year. And we've come out of this so-called pandemic, which only means that a virus transmits or is spread over three countries. Death count means absolutely nothing in dubbing something a pandemic. So I ask again, since you're now going to be moving to once a month, since we're clearly not in an emergency, are you going to now cancel the emergency so that we can move to getting back to normal way of life? Because this perpetual fraud is really getting old, and people are tired of living under these constant, constant reports of cases that mean nothing. And not only that, our city council, Board of Supervisors, and school board meetings have become now hospital ward reporting mechanisms when we have nobody in the hospital. In fact, we have so less people that hospitals are now firing perfectly good first responders and personnel who've been dealing with this issue for the past year because there is no emergency. So again, my question is, are you ready to finally cancel this emergency? This fraud, this scam that has been perpetrated traded on the public? I'd like to know. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak on this?
No, Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. Close the public comment on seven dot one, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Kick.
Hi, City Manager Mark Roberts. Do you have the percentage of total population number available, or at least the number of eligible, like the actual number of people fully vaccinated? So we can maybe do some quick math here. I think that press release is going to be very confusing to people for some time. So if we could just maybe state what the actual total population vaccination rate is.
Yes, the total population that is vaccinated is presented on the county COVID nineteen page. So yes, compared to our total population, which you saw in your earlier demography report, we can compare those two numbers and get a percentage. I don't have that one written down in front of me at the current time, but yes, we can provide sort of where we are. And you can imagine it's a several percentage points lower, essentially taking into account everybody who's from the ages of birth through eleven.
And then is, just to clarify and make sure that I understand this, those guidelines, being in yellow, eighty percent of the population, or eight weeks has passed since the vaccines are allowed for under twelves, or five to eleven. All, all three of those things have to be true. It's not one and or, it's all three true at the same time. And it does not change anything about school. It would just be for like restaurants or shopping indoors.
So Councilmember Kick, you are correct. All three of the criteria, hospitalizations, the vaccinations, all three of those criteria have to be met, and you are correct. It does not, this affects the masking order from the counties, and in particular, in our case, the county of Alameda. Not any requirement that comes from the federal government or the state government, and you referring just a moment ago to a state government requirement regarding the schools.
Okay, I would just ask if we could work on presenting that total population number, because I think this is going to be confusing wherever we're displaying the COVID data that I think would be helpful potentially to the community.
Very good.
I think you mean especially on our website. You might want to update our website page where we are relative to the county criteria is what I just heard.
Yes, that's what I was saying. Thank you for translating.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carley.
Yeah, sort of along that same theme, Mark, you mentioned that eighty-three percent had gotten the first dose in Livermore, correct?
Yes.
But that's for twelve and older, right?
Yes.
So I guess my point is that I think, and then on the course, on the Alameda County, three points that Councilmember Kick was just talking about, we're talking about eighty percent of the population. Somehow, I, you know, we need to make sure that that's clear to the public that the eighty-three percent that you mentioned doesn't, doesn't say that we're closing in on eighty percent of the total population. I, I guess I'm emphasizing the point that both the mayor made and Councilmember Kick is let's be abundantly clear. The mayor made and council member Kick is let's be abundantly clear. On the website, um. Or wherever our information is uh. Distributed to the public. Where we are and so as to not confuse people. More than they already are.
Very good. We will, we will work on that item there. I do also want to clarify. That the information that I am referring to is from a press release from the county of Alameda noting what they. Will do in the future. And obviously. You know, until they actually issue that next order, um, what we have is an indication of what their thinking is on that and the criteria they will use. Um, but there is certainly nothing that's binding as well. So we will, we will make both of those points on that. This is a roadmap and then what. What our numbers are relative to that roadmap. Um, at least on the two which are easily quantifiable.
Yes, because the second one.
Low and low and stable is a tough one. Um, so we're, although we certainly do know that our hospitalization rates are much lower than they were. Um, you know, just a few weeks ago.
No, I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Banano.
Hi, yeah, so I want to follow up on that a little bit. So. Our population is roughly eighty-nine thousand and our eligible population. Um, because I've been deeply in these numbers for the last few months is seventy-five thousand. So our. Percent of total population that's eligible is eighty-four percent. At this moment, until we until we get approval to vaccinate uh under twelve. So our fully vaccinated population, if it's seventy-two point three percent. Times eighty-four percent. We're at about sixty-one percent fully vaccinated. Don't know how many of these numbers is roughly. So this is the issue we 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 just heard raised. So we have a long way to go. So one of the questions I I have, but I we I should say. You know, we are moving in the right direction. I think some of what we've done in terms of messaging has probably helped and and a lot of people have pulled together to try to. Uh, improve our numbers and I think we're seeing that. Um. Question I have just for clarification is the county will will eventually, and I think this will be sometime in the future based on our current numbers. Um. Is going to be raising this at the county level. It's not going to be city by city and it's going to be based on county average. Mr. Roberts, is that?
You are, yes, uh, when you were done, I was gonna gonna note the fact that. That the determination is done countywide, so it is not done city by city. Um, and so the the actual numbers that we would expect to trigger, you know, meeting that criteria or not. Um, would be just the calculation you did, but countywide, not city by city, since the order will be rescinded. County or a new order will be put in place countywide.
Okay, and countywide, we're we're in slightly closer to that eighty percent. If you assume the eligible population fraction is about the same. So I think this is a, you know, this is good guidance for the what we should aspire to in the future and we need to keep going and we need to keep working on that vaccinations. Um, because if that's one of the criterion. That's one of the criterion. And um. I I just wanted to clarify those two things and answer that question. Uh, that was raised. So I think. I think I I will turn it back to the mayor. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
So um, I appreciate um all the all the discussion um by my fellow council members of. The rates. Um, I wanted to turn to a different aspect and actually just um. Uh, a-ask um. Bring something to your attention that was brought to my attention around the um. Uh. The use of streets, um. So as we're looking at going forward, I know that we've tried closing streets. I know we've tried opening state streets. One suggestion that came up and. I just wanted to um. Right, as you are looking at the flex zone programs and as you're looking at uh, you know, changing. Um, one, one suggestion that was made to to me was to um. Have different times for different for different uh 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 street uses. So have the time at. Uh, so in the evenings, close the streets in the day, open them uh to to address the different needs. So. Um, I don't actually have questions. I want merely wanted to throw that into the mix and thank you for the report.
Okay, uh. I want you, uh, thanks for the report. You raised the question monthly. I think given the situation, monthly is appropriate. Do we have? Head nods for the rest of the council on that? Okay, good. Uh, all right. Well, thank you for the report. And um. It's time for our ten minute break and let's take that break and come back at nine fifteen. Do we get another countdown?
Yes, sir. Okay, and here we go. In five, four, three, two, one. We're live.
Oh, welcome back everyone to this uh Livermore's virtual city council meeting. We're now on to item seven dot two. A resolution approving the hiring of retired annuendant Neil Snedeker. Junior uh information technology manager in accordance with government code section. Seven five two two dot five six of the public employees. Retirement law. We have the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I introduce Douglas Celestio, Assistant City Manager, who's going to lead us through this item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. Uh, as the mayor correctly noted, the item before you tonight is a resolution approving. The hiring of a retired annuendant. Uh, without uh the typical hundred and eighty day waiting period in accordance with government code section. Seven five two two point five six of the public employees retirement law. The mission of the information's. Technology division uh is critical to the ongoing. Uh, to providing ongoing city services. The information technology division manager announced his retirement and the city has begun searching for a replacement. The current information technology division manager Neil Snedeker Junior um. Were looking to hire him back after retirement as a special projects coordinator. Which will allow for a cohesive transition uh for the new information technology division manager, as well as provide additional operational support. Mister Snedeker has served uh as the IT division manager since two thousand ten. Um, he announced uh his retirement effective December thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Um, and his retirement has the potential to interrupt. The effective operation of the IT division. And would likely impact citywide operational effectiveness. Um, so uh, we're asking uh council to approve a resolution uh foregoing the hundred and eighty day waiting period. Uh, usually required before you hire retired annuendant back. Uh, human resources has already begun the recruitment to identify a replacement. Uh, and uh, we're hoping that we'll have a replacement. Um, identified and onboard by the end of November. Uh, the recruitment is going very well. We had over twenty applicants. Uh, we offered to interview to uh six highly qualified applicants and. Uh, we're down to to three at this point and uh we're we're going to make a hiring decision soon. Um. So uh. In order to um. Uh, hiring a retired new before they served a hundred and eighty day waiting period. Will allow uh for training and knowledge transfer. Uh, to the new division manager and mitigate any service disruptions and allow for continuity critical operations. So um. In addition, we uh had planned on doing an intensive workshop process to develop the city's first ever information technology master plan document. Uh, this past August, but we postponed that plan uh when the IT manager's retirement notice was received. Uh, the process is now scheduled for January and will benefit from having both the newly hired. The process is now scheduled for January and will benefit from having both the newly hired IT manager and the retired annuitant participate. As you're aware, the city operates pretty leanly. This is also true in the Information Technology Division. We, we currently have vacancies in the division and are anticipating additional vacancies besides Mr. Snedeker. And for this purpose, the hiring of the retired new will also allow the IT manager. Additional operating support that knows our systems and its challenges. The retiree is not receiving any retiring, a retirement related incentives such as a golden handshake or any other incentive. Cowper's rules indicate that the compensation paid to retirees cannot be less. Than the minimum nor exceed the maximum monthly base paid to other employees. Performing comparable duties. The special projects coordinator is not a regular staff position. And there will be no net increase in headcount to make this temporary higher. Retired and new ones are not entitled to any city employment benefits or property rights. That's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up public comment on this item at this point. Do we have any members of the public that wish to address us on seven dot two?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on seven dot two and bring it back to the council. Any questions, comments, Councilmember Carmen?
Yes, thanks. How long do you think? Mr. Snedeker would be in this position?
That's really hard to tell. It will depend upon how quickly the new IT manager picks up. What's going on? How soon we can hire additional support staff? Right now, this is, we're looking at about a six month operating window. It depends on how long. There's value created by the arrangement. So we're not signing up for a specific period of time. If the transaction happens well, it'll be shorter. If it takes more time where there's a value available. That for operational purposes will might keep them as long as six months, maybe longer.
Who decides? You?
I, it would be actually the new IT manager and how, how that person feels. It's going and, and what sort of support that they need to effectively manage the division. But yes, I'm sure I will have some input into that decision.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Seems makes sense to me. Do we need a? A motion on this? I guess we do. Would anybody like to make? I'll make the motion. Anybody want to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, any comment on this motion? Seeing none, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carley?
Aye.
Councilmember Kig?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. Big passes unanimously. So we're now on to a public meeting to receive testimony on the formation of the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District. We have the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, City Manager. And Adam Vandewater, your Office of Innovation and Economic Development Director. And we'll introduce this item and remind us where we are in our process.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Out of Vandewater, you'll recall on September thirteenth. Council approved a resolution of intent to form a wine heritage district in our historic Livermore Valley Wine Country. Per the Formation Law, the Property and Business Improvement District Law of nineteen ninety four, the lead agency, in this case, the City of Livermore. Must hold a public meeting greater than ten days after that resolution of intent to form on September thirteenth and prior to. Seven days, at least seven days prior to holding a final public hearing. Tonight's public meeting is an opportunity for council to receive testimony on the formation of the Wine Heritage District. There is no further council action before you this evening. The final public hearing and consideration of a resolution of formation. Is scheduled for November eighth. Staff therefore require. Open the public meeting and receive any public, public testimony, testimony. To form the Wine Heritage District and we will schedule a final action again on November eighth.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to open the public meeting to receive the testimony on the formation of the district. We have any members of the public that wish to address us?
Yes, Mayor, there are two requests to speak. The first is Stephen Mirsu, followed by Ian O'Leary. Stephen Mirsu, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Council, Mayor and, and Council. I just want to, as the president of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. Just want to reiterate how important it is that the Livermore Valley. Wineries have an opportunity to market themselves, market the region for its world-class quality. Through the process of the Wine Heritage District. And to make sure that each winery that is assessed under this plan. Has an opportunity to be a, a, a full participant in creating. A, a plan and fulfilling the plan that would help to make sure that all wineries. In Livermore Valley Wine, Wine Growing Area have, have the opportunity of. Reaching a larger audience, bringing more people, more customers into our historic area and. Have an opportunity again to, to. Present world-class winery wines and hospitality opportunities to a larger audience. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thanks very much.
The next speaker is Ian O'Leary, followed by Brandy Addington. Ian O'Leary, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ian O'Leary. I am on the Board of Directors of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. And I'm the owner of Spirited Packaging, supporting the wine region. Been directly involved for the three plus years of the strategic planning process that has resulted in this Wine Heritage District formation request. The purpose of this is really to have a sustainable funding source to promote and protect the Livermore Valley Wine Region. As Stephen pointed out just a moment ago, that this has a direct benefit to all of the payers, but I'd also like to add that this has a. Indirect but direct payment benefit to the City of Livermore and the entire wine region by attracting. People and dollars into the region. I'd like to wrap up with just a follow-up to what Dr. Bowers so appropriately spoke of earlier this evening. We are stronger together and I am full, I am in full support of the formation of the Wine Heritage District and I ask for your support as well. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brandy Addington. Brandy, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, City Council, and I am excited to be here and to speak on behalf of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. First, I want to thank you all for your unanimous support in our intent to form meeting back on September thirteenth, as Adam had mentioned. We continue to strive and move forward and. Just enjoy knowing that we have the confirmation of the majority of the wineries who have signed the petition that have allowed us to. Move forward with this formation. It not only, as Stephen and Ian have stated, will. Continue to further advance and promote the Livermore Valley Wine Country. But also our surrounding regions in the Tri-Valley continuing to support. The hospitality efforts to make us a world-class wine region. I'm excited to be part of this and excited that we have the support of City Council. And hope that we can continue to. Move forward to. Just be the most successful in the formation of this. I know that it will bring us to a next level of. Hospitality and destination-based. Region that we have all been striving for for several years. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, I'll close the public comment testimony on the formation. I want to thank all of you for. Commenting in favor of the formation of the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District. So thank you very much. The, we're now on to, there's no resolution. We're just receiving the testimony, correct?
That is correct.
Great. So. We're on now to seven dot four. Update on the FY twenty one, twenty three City Council Goals and Priorities. And Equity and Inclusion Work Plan.
Very good. Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your City Manager. And I will share my screen here. Very good. I wanted to give a quick update focusing mainly on our goals and priorities. Starting off first with the equity inclusion items, as you'll recall. Those were adopted in July of this year. And we are still in the process of forming the full work plan. So at our next update, you'll get a full update on progress on each of those priorities. And at the current time, we did list some of those priorities in your staff report. So that is available on letting you know that we're working in a number of areas. Including items that include our data collection and analysis with our police department. And various other activities that we are in the beginning states for. On your City Council Goals and Priorities. You'll remember that you adopted these goals essentially as a part of your twenty one to twenty three. Adoption process and you held your goal-setting workshop on March first. And then subsequently adopted these goals. And they of course include establishing a comprehensive asset management and storm water management program, ensuring the community continues to receive. Vital services through sustainable infrastructure. Enhancing that the city's vibrancy by completing critical projects downtown, ensuring the right balance of local amenities to support quality of life. Comprehensive updating your general plan, including the housing element and its programmatic EIR to address changes in regional and state policy. Market trends, community preferences, to plan for growth and conservation for the next twenty-five years. To support and enhance Livermore quality of life. Establishing a homeless strategy, engaging local partners in developing a coordinated response. Ex, to expand the diversity of affordable housing opportunities. And finally, developing a systematic approach to modernizing the city's aging business systems. Reviewing processes for alignment with industry best practices. And providing our workforce with the tools and training necessary to effectively deliver the services to the community. Since you adopted the, these goals, the staff throughout the city has been working on these issues. And we wanted to touch base with you on our accomplishments in each of these areas. So starting off with asset management. Our major development is we transitioned to a new intersect asset work program. And that was completed in September of this year. We developed a workflow and business practice and migrated asset data and developed a training program for all maintenance staff. And while that may sound like a little thing, it's actually a very important thing because of course. Being able to seamlessly add information into our data system by all of our field staff on an ongoing basis. Is a huge leap forward for us in asset management. Before that, it was done on much more of an ad hoc basis. Now, field personnel will have portable devices to be able to do that as a part of their everyday work. On storm water management, we submitted our twenty twenty one annual notification. In preparation for our maintenance projects to be implemented this fall. And in July, we completed our midterm update of our hazardous mitigation program. In downtown, we began construction of the I Street Garage in April of two thousand and twenty one. And of course, we're a project just scheduled for completion in the spring of next year. So if you've been downtown and looked over at the area, you can see as in the picture there, the. The above-ground activity, including the steel reinforcing for the garage. So we're very excited about that. In July, the council authorized an agreement with R and Design Group to conduct public outreach for Veterans Park. And we held a stakeholder engagement meeting in mid-September. So we're well underway on that item. You, you reviewed and approved Quest interim educational demonstration area. Staff approved that and it's been open for events since August of two thousand and twenty one. And of course, I think several of you have actually. Been at several of those quest events that's held in their demonstration area. And of course, in May two thousand and twenty one, the City Council approved Eden Housing Project. Livermoreum Plaza. We began construction in July two thousand and twenty one and of course, we're on schedule for completion. Or essentially early two thousand and twenty-two. We're making good progress on that item as well. Related to our general plan update, the council authorized an agreement with Placeworks in June. To update the plan and housing element and corresponding environmental document. In July. The council established the General Plan Advisory Committee Rules of Procedure. In September, you approved the committee selection process. And just last week, you completed your committee interviews. So this is a huge step forward in our outreach. And so these are the items that are visible to the community. In addition to these, we've been doing lots of work of your staff gathering baseline data. Beginning the analysis of the various models that will be necessary for use. In the EIR and traffic modeling and doing all of the background work. As well as, you can see a picture there on your screen of beginning our outreach at various city events. On homelessness and affordable housing, we had a long list of accomplishments and I'd refer you to the staff report, but I picked just a few. Worked with Alameda County to identify and implement a project room key here in the city. And that housed a number of our home, homeless individuals. Throughout the pandemic was a very successful program and then transitioned that program when it ended. To find permanent housing for those folks who were in the hotel. So overall, a very successful program. We worked with our nonprofit partners to identify and apply for federal funds that leveraged city funding. For housing and human services, such as the Federal Eviction Prevention Program. And that Federal Eviction Prevention Program delivered more than four hundred thousand dollars worth of relief to renters here in Livermore. And the city entered into a contract with City Cert to assist us, city residents with rental assistance funds. On the development of housing side, we held the grand opening. For the Chestnut Square Family Project in August of two thousand and twenty one. And in September of two thousand and twenty one. We approved the development disposition and loan agreement for the Interfaith Housing Pacific Avenue Project. And of course, that agreement provides the necessary site control that will enable the project to be competitive for funding applications. And then finally, we worked with Eden Housing to submit an application for tax credits. The downtown Eden Housing Project to receive one of the highest scores in the region. Of course, you do know that that project is the subject of litigation, but we have made. Progress on moving the, the project forward, at least to this point. Finally, related to housing, homelessness and affordable housing. The City Council adopted an update to the city's inclusionary housing ordinance in June of two thousand and twenty one. And the new onsite rental housing requirements went into effect in July. You'll remember that previous to that, based on a previous state determination. We had not had onsite rental housing requirements for inclusionary and this addressed that issue. Regionally, the staff developed a response to the county solicitation for city-sponsored. Homekeeper projects, providing housing for people experiencing homelessness. And we coordinated with the county and Crosswood Church on Goodness Village Project, providing. Twenty tiny home units for individuals experiencing homelessness. An extremely successful project that is now fully occupied of a Crosswinds Church. On modernization, training and workplace enhancements, I will again refer you to the full list of accomplishments here. Because we've made progress across the entire organization. While this effort is being led by our Administrative Services Department, it touches every department in the city. And we are making a, a number of improvements and I'm going to touch on just a couple of those. And so starting out with improving the approval process for hiring requisitions, automating that and putting it into an electronic workflow. Implementing our new public records request software. implementing our new public records request software and training staff on that and improving the accuracy and selecting an enterprise resource planning consultant. And that's of course, one who will help us go through that process. And we've completed the initiation initiation and needs assessment. So this is the part of the process where we clearly lay out to those who will ultimately provide our enterprise resource software what it is exactly we need. And this consultant also helps us make sure that we are aligning with best practices within the industry. So we don't do something unique or unhelpful as a part of what we're looking for there. And of course, we've selected a cloud-based electronic content management system software. We've implemented a new agenda management system, implemented Granicus for live council meetings, completed the evaluation and needs analysis for cybersecurity threat detection and response, completed an analysis of our electronic plans review systems that integrate with our current sell a permit system. So that'll help us take the next step forward in dealing with customers who turn in plans to us to go through our permit center. Evaluated Zoom enhancements, allowing remote public access when we return to live meetings in the council chambers, launched software helping us with traffic collision and citations and research cost and installation options for in-car digital cameras for patrol vehicles. Finally, conducted our I T assessments, including all of our end users throughout the city and as well as both on the I T side and the security business satisfaction alignment. And the library contracted with Spring Share to create a point and systems to help us withheld materials on there. So you can see overall, we've made a good progress in this first six months since we've identified the overall goals and the council has adopted them. Staff from throughout the city has worked on making these accomplishments happen. And as I noted, you do have a long list in your work program attached to your staff report. And I direct you to take a look at that. And you can see both all of the items that we've completed and also what's to come as we're working on this overall two-year work program. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Yeah, I'll open up publicly comment first. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us on this?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, thank you. We've got. Let's see, Councilmember Kick, Anne was up first.
Um, so thank you for this report and something like infrastructure and asset management and you know backend data systems aren't very like flowery and pretty and glittery and exciting. But I'm really excited because this is super foundational work that will allow everything that we're working on in that general plan to like make sense and be implemented in twenty plus years. And hopefully we'll set up systems so we can update these things sooner than every twenty years. So I really appreciate all the work. This is actually very exciting. Keep keep doing, keep doing good things. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Just wanted to also thank you for a very clear, very comprehensive report. These reports matter because there are moments where we can take a look at the completeness of what's happening. It's not just a thing happening here, a thing happening here. We get to look at it in in total. So two things strike me first, that a huge amount has taken place. And second, that it didn't all take place in six months. Much of it took place over the past. The the work, for example, on Goodness Village did not all take place in six months. It began before that. It began during the middle of a pandemic. So the fact that this much work has taken place while managing several different apocalypses or apocalypse, I'm not quite sure how you say that correctly. I'm not sure it's supposed to be plural. And then which, you know, they're tailing off now, we hope. I I find it remarkable and kudos to the whole staff and to you. So thank you.
Okay, I would like to say it was a great presentation and I I can't remember. We had all kinds of presentations over the years. Is this a different format? Or am I just imagining that it was really good, but it's always been this way?
The format is quite similar. We do this every six months. And you'll get the full report on the work program in about another six months. And I'll give you a presentation or one of the assistant city managers will lead that presentation. And we walk through the the progress that we've made in in the next six months. And and again, give you that cumulative eye toward how are we doing on the overall goal you've set.
Right. By the way, I think it was a great presentation, a lot of good work that's summarized and I really appreciate it. Just one detail, and you're going through the I T stuff. How, when do we, when do plans go all electronic? I know there was some assessment and stuff like that, but what's the, what's the thought when we're not dealing with these big stacks of paper down there?
Well, that's just exactly why we're bringing on the, as you saw in in one of the work items there. The the analysis that we are doing is to actually make that leap. And although it sounds maybe slightly disingenuous, we've never been closer. But I do believe that within this essentially goal period before the end of this, you know, next eighteen months, we'll be, you know, fully accepting, you know, full electronic submittals and that will be the the norm. We probably can't go all the way to excluding paper. But I think once we move to making our essentially our large scale customers able to submit the large plans electronically, that'll be a huge leap forward.
Nobody's going to need hand trucks to bring this stuff in anymore, is what you're saying?
I I am desperately hoping that during this period, we we will move away from that. That's been a long time coming, as you know.
Well, that's great. So I think any other comments, good work. And all right, we're on to. I guess that concludes this section, the matters for consideration, and we're now on to item eight, which is council committee reports matters initiated by the city manager, city attorney, staff and council members. So I think traditionally start with Councilmember Kick.
Yeah, I had a laughter meeting and we bought some buses. I actually didn't do anything. I approved purchase of buses. So that's great. We're going to get some new buses from Gilig. So that's extra exciting because they're all locally produced in Livermore, which is an extra special thing, big bus being manufactured in town. It's extra special to be on that board. I have a couple matters initiated. The the first is around our general plan. I think we had a a very large amount of people apply and then ended up with a great group of twenty with other people who were also fantastic that didn't make it on. But during that same period of time, we had other advisory bodies that were looking for members and they did not get enough applications. So I was hoping that staff could do some sort of data dive, a follow-up survey for everybody that that applied and just let, ask them how they thought the experience was, how they found out so that we can maybe replicate some of those best practices for advisory bodies moving forward. Because the general plan seemed to have, I don't know if it's just because the subject matter seemed more exciting or that we did more specific outreach and that's what I'm hoping data will will tell us. So if we can get some sort of follow-up on what worked and then maybe replicate that in the future, that would be great. Similarly, along the same lines of lessons learned from this general plan outreach, we had a number of members who ended up on the general plan advisory body who had very different skill and strengths that some had really fantastic written applications and some had not so great written applications, but fantastic verbal applications. And in my outside of council life, a friend of mine had applied for a job and and I didn't realize that this person had hearing issues. And when their job interview went from being a Zoom interview to a phone interview, it was very difficult for them. And so when I asked, why weren't you just more upfront and said, phone interviews don't work for me? There was fear of discrimination. So yes, the law says that we have to accommodate. But I think maybe moving that up in our application process to just say, please let us know if there is, if there's something we can do to accommodate you to make sure that you can give the best interview possible. Something like I need A S L translation or we just an opportunity to provide. I think in general, when you invite the opportunity for someone to disclose and need, they're more willing rather than feeling like they're asking for something extra, especially when they're when they're in a competitive space. So those are just two of my lessons learned and kind of wanted to see if other council members thought that would be worth staff doing some work on.
Their currents, okay. Very good. We'll do some work on that, Councilmember Kick.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carling.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that I wanted to emphasize. One is I, on the second of October, I had the opportunity to go out and work at Goodness Village for the morning on a volunteer time. I think there's probably half a dozen folks from the community as well as a several of the residents there also working. And I know that the city manager talked about being fully occupied, which is true, twenty eight units fully occupied with individuals. And for the public that's listening, this, these are permanent locations. These are not stop gaps with some expectation that they'll move on. I mean, they may move on on their own volition, but there's no expectation that that they're to move out at some point. And just to give people a sense of where these folks come from, so of the twenty eight, nineteen are from Livermore. Five are from Pleasanton, one from Dublin and three from Castro Valley. So again, the preponderance of people are right from our own community right here in Livermore. On the fifth, I had an opportunity to do a ride along with Dave Martin and Andy Graycar. They're, they are our homeless liaison officers. And they continue to do, I continued to be impressed by their care, patience, compassion for those struggling out there in our community. And we rode around and spent some time talking to several individuals. I'll say that I know there's been concern in the past about the creek in particular behind Coles and and Walmart, but there was only one individual living there when we went by the other day. I would also say that the folks we spoke with, all of them are from Livermore. And all of them have some mental incapacity that makes it very difficult for them to communicate effectively, hold a job, live in a residential, a traditional residential kind of environment and so on. So I know that the, one of the expectations of the equity and inclusion was to hire a mental health clinician. I know that the chief, because I've talked to him about this. The chief is looking for somebody and I think that will be a great add to our community outreach for those that are suffering and unsheltered. This past weekend, I also did a ride for Bikes and Brews. And I guess I was reminded of this by Councilmember Kick because Bikes and Brews is a fundraiser for kids bike lane. They purchase bikes for kids in need and it's a great opportunity. But one of the interesting things it is, I, so I ran into somebody there that overheard me talking to somebody else about the homeless and he had recently moved here from Texas. About just as the pandemic started and which isn't funny necessarily, but just coincidentally. Anyway, he and I spent some time at each of the breweries talking. And he was quite interested in the advisory body and had no idea that we had advisory bodies. And I I tried to encourage him as much as I could and I even mentioned that Councilmember Kick and Vice Member Monroe were doing the interview. So I hope that he'll apply because it's, I'm pretty sure that he was involved in some community kinds of activities like this back in Texas. So again, any opportunity that I have, and I'm sure you guys, we all do this, but looking for other people to join the advisory bodies are all always. Applications are always welcome. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Banana.
Yeah, I just want to mention picking up on Councilmember Kick's laughter item that we are in the next, I think it's in our November board meeting. We're going to be making a decision on the zero emission bus fleet, which will be rolled out over the next almost seven or eight years, but we'll be deciding between battery electric buses or fuel cell electric buses or some combination of the two. And that's pretty exciting for laughter to be putting a plan in place to replace its fleet with completely electric vehicles and everything that goes along with it. So that'll be exciting. We have quite a lengthy report to review before our next meeting that we make the decision at. So I want to mention that. And then I want to mention that Councilmember Carling and I have been meeting several times in the last week and a half with our, as part of our climate action subcommittee. We were a little bit waylaid by, we'd met once, then we got sort of sidetracked by all the general plan activity. So we've been really doing some intensive meetings with staff, really appreciate the staff time. But I I hope they feel like it's been useful. It's not only been planner Ponto, but Mr. Stewart and Paul Spence and Andy Ross. So we've had a really good group and we've gone through measure by measure, action by action of the set that's in the draft plan and really understanding the words very precisely. We need to understand them, so we can communicate them. They need to be clear and as simple as possible. We want to eliminate redundancies. We want to make sure we haven't missed anything. So I think we're doing good work. It's it's fairly time consuming, but it's helping me really get a greater appreciation from what's in the plan. And I think it's going to enable us to be better communicators of it. And just wanted to mention that. That's my sort of my secret sixth goal and priority for this two-year period. And I think, I think we're making some good progress. And the last thing I'll say about that is through our general plan interview process, like we're sort of keeping track of keywords and things that seem to be of great importance to our applicants. And you'll not be surprised that housing, some form of housing was everybody, many, many applicants. One of their focus areas or critical areas and climate change, climate action was the second highest number of occurrences in all my notes that people had to say. So it's definitely on the mind of people who are thinking about the future of our city. So I would just close with that and also just want to say good work to all the staff on all the work so far on those goals and priorities. Thank you.
I've got a question for you. You mentioned the the electric bus fleet. And is there an opportunity for the council to weigh in on what we believe is the right answer on that?
Well, I'm guessing, I'm guessing maybe we're your proxy for that. I I don't know if Councilmember Kick.
Well, this is an interesting thing because we, you know, we we talked about these report outs and there's, there are a couple of things, you know, what are interesting? And then we've talked in the past about for those topics that may be significantly interesting to all of us, that part of these report outs is to give the council a heads up so that we have the opportunity to weigh in. So it strikes me that this is one of those examples where it could be useful for us to be able to weigh in. And so I would like to ask city man, so I wasn't sure of the timing of what you said. But I'd like to ask, I mean, I'm asking, is there an opportunity for us to weigh in? And maybe the city manager has to answer this question.
Well, certainly getting feedback. And so if we are talking about feedback to your representatives on laughter, is that the question here to be able to weigh in on that? I mean, normally we can schedule something for a council discussion where that item could be discussed and you could give direction to your representatives so that they could carry that back to the board.
I think, and so my question, and I I, I think, and so my question, and I, sorry, I didn't really get the dates from Councilmember Banana.
So I, I, the board is board, I believe the board, I'm confusing my role as a committee member on program and services in the board, but, but we are approving, I believe is per, I believe is the board is approving in November. But I will double check. It's not earlier than November when the final decision will be made.
So I was just to ask, you know, to follow on to what you were doing here is if we could have that opportunity, I would like to recommend that we do if there are other three head nods on that.
Oh, I think the only question is what, how would you like your, we can forward you the draft study that was done and, and put together by a consultant firm to laughter and that would be, that's what we're reviewing. That's certainly something I can pass on. We can pass on.
So it would be, anyway, that's just a thought. Because part of what we, you know, we said was for those things that are significant, that we would give the council a heads up and that we would have an opportunity. So this strikes me as, as an example that we could test that thought. So if you could work with the city manager to see if it's feasible, that would be great.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Banano and I can check in with the city manager.
Oh, wait, okay, wait, wait. We've only get on the matters initiated. There's only two they can talk. Could Brown Act, so. Anyway, that's the request. I think we, I think we saw enough head nods that you guys can figure it out with the city manager. So, so thank you. And we're now on to Vice Mayor Monroe.
Oh, good evening. First of all, I've been told that I'm very quiet. So if you cannot hear me, let me know. That's not usually the complaint about me. So I wanted to begin with just thanking everybody. I missed the last council meeting. I was there for closed session. And then I left to observe Simchat Torah, which is the end of the fall cycle of Jewish holidays. And I, I, I appreciate the, the understanding for, for everybody. Means that my report tonight will be, include a month's worth of, of material. And I just wanted to reflect a little bit on what ha, and, and this is sort of an example of equity and inclusion stuff around how we care for people who are of any kind. This is just an example in, in minorities. So for me, September is pretty much the way December is for most of the rest of the world, right? Or most of the rest of America. December comes and I'm like, hey, you guys busy? What's going on? I'm, I'm like feeling pretty free and easy. This happens with other groups as well, other religions. And I just want to note it as we go forward and appreciate your understanding for me in this case and as we give it to each other going back and forth. So that was, that was one thing. I had two matters initiated that I wanted to bring forward. One is following up on the proclamation with regard to the Afghan refugees. I would like to ask that the city support that through a website which would collect places people can help. A, a, a collection is pretty much the way we do with homelessness, where, where people can help to support homeless individuals and so on. So could I get some head nods on that? Is that, I'm seeing them? Okay. So that was one thing. And then secondly, this just came up as a result of the previous conversation. I have no idea what criteria I would use to bring forward, say, something on EBCE. I probably do for EBCE, but for, when would I want to bring that forward? I would like to ask us to agendize a discussion so that we can come up with some of those criteria. So that I at least have, have clarity on when I'm expected to make sure that council weighs in. Could, does that, does that work? Not seeing head nods. I am seeing head nods. Okay. Mayor Warner, were you gonna say something or should I just keep?
I was just gonna say is that the understanding I had is that we're left to our own devices on this. And then, you know, what's important, I think Councilmember Carling brought forth some stuff on the stop ways that could be impactful where we'd have to consider something, you know, from a city point of view. It's, I think we can have an agendized item, but it's really something that is significant. You know, it's a big, so in this bus case, it's a big item, big dollar thing and it has an impact and it has a you know, it has an impact on our overall climate action plan and how we think about things. So that's the only reason I brought it up. We can have an agendized item. I'm okay with that, but these things are few and far bet, between. And as you were giving report outs, we, you know, we're all free to just, you know, think about. But anyway.
The, the report outs were not free because at that point we do have the Brown Act. So I, I would, I would like to do, to go ahead and do the agendized item. Okay, great. I, I think there was another one somewhere in there. So, and then I wanted to note the day of, that we're meeting on, which is on my calendar, it showed up with two notices. One said Columbus Day and one said Indigenous Peoples' Day. And again, this is sort of in the, you know, thinking about how, how we think about equity and inclusion. So I wanted to just sort of, I don't want to have us recognize this necessarily at this point, but as we're moving towards thinking about groups that we include in one way or another, I wanted to note the history of Columbus Day, which began really in, it, it was observed very early on, but then it was made a part of the, a, a, a national holiday as a result of basically a lynching of eleven Italian Americans. So this was, you know, a different time and a different place. But it was also a time where this was recognizing a people, a group of people who were being treated badly by others in the United States. Indigenous Peoples' Day does something else. It recognizes that the land that we have built on, the land that we have belonged to other peoples. And particularly in Livermore, that I think that matters since we often speak of living on land that belonged to the Aloney People, that belonged to the Miwok People. So I thought that this was just a moment to reflect on who we are and how we think about the context that, that we live in historically and in the present, in, in this context of equity and inclusion. So that was that. In terms of what I've done in the last month, I wanted to make sure I mentioned the League of California Cities Conference, which I know that Councilmember Carling talked about last month, our last, last council meeting. I wanted to mention two sessions that I, I went to. One was on the role of citizens in, of, of leaders in housing. And the other was the work done in, by other cities in equity and inclusion or diversity equity and inclusion. In particular, we had the example from, I'm not gonna say this wrong because I was corrected up one side and down the other, but San Luis Obispo. If anybody's here from it, if I did it wrong, I'm sorry. And very similar demographics and a somewhat different process. As a result of that, a League of California Cities is gonna sponsor round tables to carry this forward more generally at the state level so that we can all learn from each other as we do the work that's really gonna be taking a number of years going forward. And then I, I also wanted to note the, the general plan work that was just completed. And I, I wanted to call out, I was really impressed with what, one of the questions was what, what do you think a general plan is? And I wanted to just call out a couple of the, of the examples. A vision that translates into the, into physical space. A legacy we leave, need, leave for the next generation. A roadmap that gives a city a chance to revitalize. A value statement, who we are and what we want to do with the resources. So those were just a few examples. Really thoughtful work and, and many other examples I didn't give. I don't want to keep you here all night. But very thoughtful work. And then to follow up on Councilmember Banano's notes about the housing, the, the mention on housing and climate change, just wanted to note that the last time we, several years ago, as we were looking at the downtown plan, affordable housing ended up number ten on the list of priorities. We're only, we're four, four years in the future here. And the, I, I, it, it felt to me, and I did not actually do the, the, an actual count. But I'd say well over half of the people mentioned affordable housing as being one of the most significant issues. It really shows how quickly a situation can change as, as, as we, as we move forward. So I think that that's significant going forward. That's all I've got. Thank you for indulging me.
I, I thought you were gonna make some initiative relative to the Afghan.
I did.
Oh, okay.
You missed it.
Yeah, I guess I, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
It was approved. Everybody nodded except you.
Okay. I don't know that I didn't, but, okay.
I think you did, actually.
Right. Okay. Anyway, so I, what I, what I did was in the report. But I do want to have one matter initiated to a request, a resolution authorizing the request to display the POW MIA flag for a week of November ten to seventeen, twenty twenty-one to be placed on the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one agenda. Do I have head nods on that? Okay, thank you. We're now adjourning to a special meeting on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one at five PM related to training on cybersecurity and the redistricting map tools. As well as a regular meeting on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM, both held virtually using Zoom. So thank you. Good night.